Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Joint City Council Regular Meeting and Successor Agency to the former Series Redevelopment Agency meeting of Monday, September 12th, 2016. Can we have the roll call, please?
Council and agency member DeRocsette.
Here.
Council and agency member Lane is absent. Vice Mayor and Vice Chairman Klein.
Here.
Council and agency member Rhino.
Here.
Mayor and Chairman Viera.
Here.
Next, we will have the invocation by Ira Henry, the Valley View Church of Nazarene.
Our let us bow our heads and pray. Our heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with thanksgiving in our hearts for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us as a community here in the city of Series. We also would like to thank you for this wonderful nation that we are so very proud to be citizens of, but let us not forget that the freedoms and liberties that we have today, it came with a cost. So help us to not, help us, help us to not take these things for granted and to remember that we are a nation under God. We gather together in this body and we ask you to anoint and bless this meeting place. We pray a blessing over our mayors, Chris Viera and Mike Klein, and that of the council members Brett DeRocsette, Kim Lane, Leonard Rhino, and that of, and that of the city clerk Diane Perez and city treasurer Harry Herbert. We ask God that you would bless us with your presence and the spirit of unity as we gather together to express our concerns and needs of our community of Series. Thank you, God, for you, for your love and kindness and how gracious you are to us. I pray this prayer in the most precious name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Henry. We have no presentations this evening, so we'll move to citizens' communication to counsel on matters not included on the agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Yesterday was a anniversary of something that happened to our country that had never happened before. We were attacked on our own soil by an enemy that we can't even identify by uniform or anything like that. I hope that you all remembered yesterday was 9/11. Fifteen years ago, all firefighters lost over 300 of our brothers, and we will never forget them. There were hundreds of brave people trying to rescue others, police, Port Authority Police, New York City Police Department, and my 300-plus brothers of the New York Fire Department. Yesterday, many places held vigils or had a service of some sort. Me personally, I have my own personal service every 9/11 when I ask God to bless all firefighters and police officers, whether they're here in Series or wherever they are because they lost brothers and sisters in that tragedy, not just in New York City, but Washington, DC, and Pennsylvania. Remember those. Never, ever let them go out of your mind. It's not another holiday. It's a remembrance, just like Memorial Day has become, just like Veterans Day has become. And to quote FDR, "It's a day that will live in infamy forever." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Dave Pratt, Series. You guys really need to stop using Bedesso to work on your traffic lights and find somebody that knows what they're doing, and it's terrible getting out of this town. I should take my wife's advice and go the back way. It saved me a lot of grief. Thank you.
Waste wheeler, garbage can. First citation, $20. Second citation, $50. Third citation, $50. Citation, $100, and it's got down here, waste wheeler in public view, $105. Total, $355. I didn't go to Sirota High School, but I know that $100 and $105 is not $355. Mr. Mayor, I've went around and took pictures also. My garbage can is between my motor home, my wife's car, and my Jeep, and there's only one time that you can see that, is whenever you're 90 degrees into that thing. Should it be there? Probably not. But I can go out in the street and I can take pictures of garbage cans on the street. And I drove down and I took pictures of cars parked on the driveway, not concrete. When Rob was here, remember that we couldn't pour concrete no more than 50% of the yard because of Whitmore down there, them duplexes had concrete all over. I poured 20 yards of concrete on the do, the house on 2301 so I could park my stuff. Now, and I put all new yard, new grass, new everything in, new sprinklers, and it seems like he's got, well, he does have a vendetta against me, and I know he's harassing me, and I know he's been doing this for a long time. And you can ask Mr. Westbrook when it all started. I would appreciate it if this stopped. I would really appreciate it if this stopped.
So your waste wheeler wasn't in the street, it was up on the...
It was up against my garage with the Jeep and my motor home and my wife's car right there. And I, now I put a yellow, I mean a blue tarp over it because we went through that the last time I was in because the kids out there at the ballpark, they was family sitting out on the outfield watching their kids play, and then the Series baseball, they put tarps on it so they couldn't see through there. So I figure, well, if they, if they can put tarps on there to keep people from seeing the kids, I can put tarps on mine to keep them from seeing mine. That's wrong. That's absolutely, that's not the way to do it, but I'm just getting aggravated. Every time I turn around, somebody's taking pictures of my property and giving me tickets. It don't even make sense. $100 and $105 is not $355. I'm not going to pay it. And it says here that we can go to court, we can go to court. You can give it to your lawyer, or you can give it to the city manager, or whoever you would like to, but I'm not paying this.
Okay?
Okay? Thank you very much.
Okay, do have a speaker card here from Anne Marie Montgomery?
I'm the Series Library Supervisor, and I just wanted to tell you about some things that are going on in the Series Library pretty soon. In the next few weeks, we're going to be having quite a few programs at the library. Every Monday at 10:30, we have a Wiggle Room Storytime. The attendance is growing, we've been doing it for a couple of months now, and it's a very exciting program. It's for the littlest one, babies up to three years old. And we also have preschool storytime on Tuesdays at 10:30. After that, we have a stay and play where the children, it's like a playdate in the library. It's a nice, safe environment. Parents can meet other parents and the children and caregivers, and the children can play in the library. Every other Wednesday, we have a We Move and Play that's a music and imaginative play program with educational toys, again, a chance for people to meet each other in the community. We now have a book club for adults. It meets on the third Wednesday of every month at 11:30. This month, the book is The Book of Unknown Americans by Christina Henriquez. We have extra books at the library. You come and you check one out. A couple of weeks later, you come back and have a group of people to discuss the literature with. And that's brand new, we've only done it one month, but we did have quite a few people show up. In October, we're going to have Python Runs, Reptile Kingdom at the library, and that's going to be on October 17th at 4:00 PM. All of the programs at the Series Library are free of charge. They are funded by the 1/8 cent sales tax and by the generosity of the Friends of the Series Library Group. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agend item?
I do. My name is Jenny. I just want to know why they stopping the bus? B, because I take the bus. If they go stop the bus, I don't have the way to take the bus to take the other bus.
That, that item is going to be discussed, this is anything that's not on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
So we'll, we'll get to that item shortly.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. With that, we will move on. We have no appointments to boards and commissions this evening. Conflict of interest declaration, is there anyone in the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the consent calendar items or public hearing items or any of the other new business or discussion items? I have one on item number 17. I have business dealings with the purchaser, so I will step down from that item. With that, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. This time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion? I don't want it really pulled, but I'd like to have a correction to 3A. The correction would be on page four, and it's item number 3A, and it, about halfway down the page where it states that Mr. Westbrook stated that each, each unit will have its own water heater, and it should say water meter. So I'd just like to have that correction replaced from water heater to water meter. Okay?
I'd like to pull item eight.
Eight, you said?
Eight.
Okay. Okay. So is there anyone in the audience that would like an item pulled other than eight or 17? Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to council for direction on the other items.
Move to approve 1, 2, 3 with the changes, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 18.
I'll second.
Can we have a motion a second? Can we have the roll call, please?
Council and agency member DeRocsette.
Yes.
Council and agency member Lane, oh, council and agency members Lane's absent, sorry. Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Klein.
Yes.
Council and agency member Rhino.
Yes.
Mayor and Chairman Viera.
Yes. Okay, item number eight, resolution number 2016-106, authorizing amendments to policy 600, finance, travel, and subsistence policy. Councilmember Rhino?
Well, first, on the staff report where it says the per diem rate for the LA area is greater than the per diem rate for the Sacramento area, that isn't true. It really is $64 per diem, correct?
That's correct. It should have said Bay Area versus Los Angeles. Bay Area has the higher dollar amount.
And then, at first, I was thinking it would make sense to include breakfast in a per diem if staff is away at training and they included a continental breakfast, but then I thought, if you're already staying in the hotel and continental breakfast is included, are you really going to leave that facility and go out somewhere and spend an hour to eat breakfast? I, I think the continental breakfast should be considered breakfast, and there shouldn't be per diem separate for that.
That is the way the current policy is written. Staff is recommending a change here. One, driven by the post reimbursement for aligned share of our training, obviously the largest department is the police department. Post does reimburse for breakfast that's included in their per diem rate, so depending on where they're staying, and obviously every hotel's continental breakfasts are not all created equal, some may be a piece of toast, some may a little more substantial than that. But that led to, that piece of this discussion was that differential between the post reimbursement covering the breakfast and, under our current policy, if it's continental breakfast, then we're not reimbursing for per diem. So we're recommending making that change so that we're consistent with Post. Again, largest part of our per diem is for the officers, but this is a, really, it's a council discretionary item. This is, doesn't, there's no, you know, huge pressing issue here, but there is an inconsistency on the post reimbursements. We felt this was the easiest way to solve that, is just to eliminate that continental breakfast. And again, you know, not all trainings are the same, not all hotels are the same, you know, there's quite a bit of variation there. We felt that that was the simplest change that we could make to make it a little more consistent across the board.
And then my other comment was, I had asked Toby, since the majority of the people who go to seminars are police officers and there is the reimbursement by post, why we don't have our per diem the same as Post rather than the GSA? And he explained that the way Post does it is they include reimbursement for the hotel, so it's really not lumped out separately.
Correct. You can break it out a little bit because for different trainings of Post, like the basic academy, they have a per diem for meals of $50. So you can kind of break it out that way to give you an idea of what that would be, but that's, the general rule of thumb is about $50. You know, the GSA rate, we just felt was more consistent across the board regardless of where you're traveling, anywhere in the country for that matter, there's a set rate, and it's what the federal government uses. So it's just a little easier applicable so that you can have the per diem relative to the area that you're traveling to. That's really, again, a simplicity approach that a number of cities have gone to. It just makes it a little easier in the grand scheme of things if folks say, you know, if they're traveling to an area where they've got a little higher cost of living, then, you know, that's why we're recommending changing that to the GSA. But again, this is a discretionary item, staff's recommending it, but we can do just the continental breakfast change, we can do the full GSA change, or the council could direct us to, to say, no, we don't like either of those changes. Give us a different number.
Plus, the GSA includes an incidental.
Correct.
Which is only, only $5, but we don't have that now in our travel subsistence where you get breakfast, lunch, and dinner, plus you get an incidental.
Correct. Yeah, and today's, today's dollar amounts, $10 for breakfast, $10 for lunch, $20 for dinner, for a $40 total per diem. Under the GSA, the minimum is $51, which is $11 for breakfast, $12 for lunch, $23 for dinner, and then a $5 incidental. That's the, the $51 would be the floor. Depending on where you're traveling to, it'd go up to as much as 74, like mentioned in the staff report. Los Angeles and Sacramento is 64.
Vice Mayor Klein?
You know, I can, I can understand Councilmember Rhino's comment about the breakfast and the continental breakfast, but with the job that I do currently and the travels that I do and hotels that offer the continental breakfast, I've been at some that offer continental breakfast, which is fruit, jelly rolls, and maybe yogurt, and some that include eggs, bacon, French toast, waffles. So there's really inconsistencies there. So, you know, it's, it's one that we would either have to define from the hotel. But on the other hand, when I travel, the company only pays breakfast and dinner. They don't pay lunch because they say if you were in your own, in your own area, you would be buying your own lunch anyway. So they don't, they don't allow a lunch, and some of them have, have limits. They pretty much will got away from it, but, but, you know, I mean, it's which way of the spectrum we're going to, you know, we're going to, we're going to go. If, if they set up the hotel and we find out about what kind of continental breakfast it is, then that's one thing, but, but the spectrum is, is completely different, and I'd much rather, you know, go into a Denny's for 30 minutes than, than have a sweet roll and, and a yogurt for me for breakfast, then, you know, some of them have a whole range of things. So it's, it's, to me, it's really hard to, to cut, to cut that part out with a per diem because you don't know exactly what you're going to go for a continental breakfast, so...
This is making me hungry. You know, I, I'm fine with the staff report. I'm just sitting here thinking that, you know, if we have our employees going out trying to get better at what they do to bring that to our city, you know, then I think happy employees, if that's something that's going to benefit them, then I'm all for it. I did have a continental breakfast, my kid was playing baseball down in Southern California, it was terrible, but I'm okay with the staff report.
Yeah, I think I can vouch, not all continental breakfasts are created equal. Some of the toasts that I've had and some of those, you could probably bounce against the wall, but anyway, I, I don't think anybody's getting rich on this deal, and, you know, in fact, I, I think there's a show that wanted to see if you could eat for that amount of money, and it's, it's pretty hard to eat for that.
No, it isn't.
Really?
No. We eat out a lot, and believe me, I can do $40 a day, and I'm not talking just fast food either.
In San Francisco?
Um, probably, and all across the country because, you know, we travel a lot, so, just saying.
Okay, well, what's the, at this point, I'll open up to the audience, anyone that wants to speak on this item? Okay? If not, I'll bring it back to the council for direction on this.
Move to adopt resolution 2016-106. Second.
Okay, we have a motion a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Council and agency member DeRocsette.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Klein.
Yes.
Council and agency member Rhino.
No.
Mayor and Chairman Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 3011.
Okay. And since the mayor stepped away from item number 17, resolution 2016-104, approving a sale of real property described as APN 127-1018021 and 127018022, 3004 and 3012, Fifth Street and related actions. Does anybody on the council have any questions or comments?
No.
Anybody from the public have questions or comments? I'll bring it back to the council for action.
Move to adopt resolution number 2016-114.
Second.
Have the roll call?
Council and agency member DeRocsette.
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chairman Klein.
Yes.
Council and agency member Rhino.
Yes.
Motion passes 3011.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have no unfinished business this evening, public hearing, we have one. Conduct a public hearing to consider approving, number one, resolution number 2016-116, approving changes to the Series area transit route fares hours and days of service, and changes to Series dialerized fares, hours of service, and rider eligibility standards, and authorizing the city, excuse me, the engineering services department to implement these changes in December 2016. Before I go to the next one, Tom, are these held separately, or can they be done together?
They could be together.
Okay. And item number two, resolution number 2016-117, approving amendment number one to the city's March 10th, 2014 agreement with Store Transit Systems, Inc. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor Viera. Tonight, we have a presentation by Fred Cavanaugh, our transit manager, to provide some information for both council and for the public attending tonight. Fred?
Oh, it's there. Sorry. So how do I maximize this? Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Fred Cavanaugh, the city's transit manager. I'm going to be presenting to you tonight the proposed changes to the Series area transit and Series dialeride services. So the, first thing, I will just go through a quick summary here. This is a rather significant issue, probably the biggest issue that Series transit services have faced in a number of years. What we are proposing to do this evening is make significant service revisions to the Series dialeride system and to the Series area transit fixed route services. And the reason we're going to be making these changes or are proposing these changes is because of the need to meet a state efficiency mandate that currently these transit services are not meeting. These revisions would become effective December 1st if the city council adopts the staff proposal. And also proposed tonight is an amendment with the contract services provider, which is Store Transportation Services Incorporated. And those, those services are the, excuse me, the contract is proposed to be amended due to the reduction in service hours, and as a result of the reduction in service hours, we need to make, we need to ensure that, that the contractor is kept whole and is not losing money on the contract. So the reason why these transit revisions are necessary is because the Series transit services are not meeting the state mandated ratio of fare revenues to operating expenses. That's known as the fare box ratio. So essentially, another way to, to say that is that if you take the fare revenues that are brought in by the transit services and divide that by the total operating expenses for the services, they need to meet certain standards established by the state. And so for general public transit services, which actually both of the transit systems that are operated by the city of Series meet the definition of a general public transit service, these transit services need to meet a fare box ratio of 20%. So when I, when I use that term fare box ratio, that is the ratio of fare revenues to operating expenses. So the, the actual fare ratios that the transit systems in Series achieved during fiscal year 1516 fell well short of the 20% requirement. So as you can see, the Series area transit met a 9% ratio, and Series dialeride achieved an 8% ratio, which are significantly below the state mandate. And there are penalties that are then imposed by the State Transportation Development Act on transit agencies that do not meet the fare recovery ratio requirements. So the penalty is actually determined by the amount of fare revenues that were collected and the amount of fare revenues that should have been collected to meet the 20% requirement. So that, that difference between those two figures is the actual penalty. And the penalty then is applied, the And the penalty then is applied the second year after the penalty is incurred. And the way that penalty is, is, um, imposed would be by the Standoff Council of Governments, um, distributing funds to Series to operate its transit system that are, uh, less than what the transit system needs and is otherwise eligible for. And the, the difference between what is received and what is needed is that fare difference, the difference between what was actually received and the, and the amount that should have been received. So in, um, in fiscal year fifteen sixteen, uh, Series, the, the difference between the actual received and the amount that should have been received in Series was about a hundred thousand dollars. So that would be the penalty that would be imposed upon the city of Series, uh, if, if the, uh, if that fifteen sixteen year was, uh, subject to the fare recovery ratio mandate, which fortunately is not yet, um, the city would have been, uh, required to pay essentially a hundred thousand dollars out of its general funds to cover the cost of its transit service two years after the fiscal year in which the penalty was incurred. So in this case, if the penalty was incurred in fiscal year fifteen sixteen, the penalty would actually be paid in fiscal year seventeen eighteen. Uh, the, uh, it graphically, it's essentially shown, uh, in, in this slide. So as you can see, um, the, the twenty percent level that the Series Transit Systems needed to meet, um, is, is shown. And what the Series Services actually did meet for, uh, Series Dialeride was seven and a half percent, and Series Area Transit was nine percent. Um, that is, uh, graphically shows you the difference between what, uh, is necessary and what was actually received. And that's about, that it would incur approximately a hundred thousand dollar penalty. And so what we're trying to do is get to the level that is shown on the right-hand side of the slide, where, uh, the Series Area Transit is at the twenty percent level, and Series Dialeride is at a ten percent level. Now, the ten percent level is going to be adequate for Series Dialeride because the state, uh, requirement for, uh, transit systems that serve only seniors and people with disabilities is ten percent. So the, uh, what we're gonna be proposing is to change the way that Series Dialeride operates, so that it would be eligible for the ten percent. So here, here's a list of items that we're, uh, trying to do to achieve the, uh, the fare recovery ratio requirements. So with Series Area Transit, we still need to meet twenty percent, uh, we will need to meet twenty percent. Um, so what we're proposing to do is eliminate the days and the hours of service with low ridership. And with Series Area Transit, Saturdays and Sundays are very, very low ridership. And, uh, there are several hours of the day in which ridership is very low on Series Area Transit. So we would propose to eliminate those days of service and shorten the number of hours of service that the, uh, Series Area Transit operates. We would eliminate, uh, unproductive route segments, and there are several route segments that are, um, very unproductive, essentially don't carry, um, uh, a significant number of passengers at all. We would combine the remaining segments of the, of the route, uh, as much of the routes, uh, that we can that have productive service. We would combine those into one route, a very simple, a very direct route that's easy for, uh, the writing public to understand. And hopefully, as a result of that, we would, uh, increase the riders per service hour that are using the system. Uh, when riders per service hour are increased, typically that is going to increase the fare recovery ratio, or the fare box ratio for that service. Now, the passenger fare, uh, for CAT is proposed to be reduced from two dollars to a dollar fifty. And I'll talk a, a little bit about that later, but, uh, there are no other transit systems in the, in this county that charge two dollars for a one-way trip on a, um, uh, fixed route service such as, uh, Series operates. So we're gonna be, uh, suggesting a reduction there. Now, Series Area Dialeride, it will be eligible for a ten percent fare recovery ratio if it carries, or is, is open only to people who are seniors or have disabilities. As a general public service, which it currently is, it's required to meet the twenty percent fare recovery ratio. There are no Dialeride services that I'm aware of that are able to generate a twenty percent fare recovery ratio. Um, and therefore, that is a, essentially an unachievable objective. So we need to cut Series Dialeride a, uh, down, down to the point where it, it actually can meet a ratio and not incur a penalty every single year, and that ratio is, is ten percent. So we're proposing to, to do that. And then, we also need to increase the passenger fare on Dialeride. Uh, essentially, every Dialeride system that meets that ten percent ratio has a fare that is significantly higher than, uh, Series Dialeride currently charges. One of, one of the issues, uh, significant issues that, that challenges the Series Area Transit and Series Dialeride is that the Series Dialeride service has a fare of only fifteen cents more than the fixed route service. So when you have that kind of a difference in fare between two services, essentially the fixed route service is going to have a real difficult time generating ridership. Uh, people see that service and know that they only have to pay fifteen cents more for essentially a door-to-door taxi, and they're gonna take advantage of the door-to-door taxi. They're not gonna ride the fixed route service. So, uh, by, by, uh, limiting ridership on the Dialeride system to seniors and disabled only, that essentially is going to force members of the general public to find another way to travel, and that way to travel hopefully is gonna be the Series Area Transit Fixed Route Service. So, uh, that should help increase ridership on the fixed route service as well. Uh, the, the one thing that I had, uh, heard from a consultant many, many years ago is that in cities where there is both a fixed route service and a Dialeride service that are open to the general public, neither one will succeed, and they will both fail. And that's the scenario that we're faced with here in Series. Neither one of the services are doing well, and they both have diffi- difficult, uh, situations to deal with. Um, so now, the, the magnitude of the changes that we're proposing are going to enable, um, Series Transit Services to be exempt for two years from the fare recovery ratio requirements. So during that two-year period of time, that, that gives the services the opportunity to generate enough fare revenues, enough riders, to then meet that fare ratio when the, uh, the two-year exemption period is over. But in order to qualify for this two-year exemption, radical changes needed to be made to the transit services so that they could be considered by the Standoff Council of Governments as new services. So the proposal to StandCOG was that the city of Series was gonna be making some significant changes, uh, to the extent that I have described to you. And as a result, StandCOG granted a, uh, two-year exemption to Series from those, um, from the fare, uh, recovery ratio penalties. Um, so again, what we're, with, with the changes that, uh, we're proposing, we would, uh, expect to bring, uh, Series Dialeride up to a ten percent ratio, and hopefully CAT up to a twenty percent ratio. Uh, so the, the, uh, the changes to the days and hours of service that we're proposing are shown on this slide. So you can see on the, uh, the left-hand column, we have, show the days of the week and the, and the two, uh, transit systems that, uh, Series operates. Then we have the current hours in the center column and the proposed hours in the right hand column. And you can see Monday through Friday on CAT, we're proposing to reduce service, uh, the end of service, the service day from six fifty PM to six PM. And then on Saturday and Sunday, we're proposing to not operate, uh, any service, excuse me, any, any service at all on those days because of the very, very low ridership that CAT experiences on those days. Now, Series Area Dialeride, uh, we are proposing to reduce, uh, service, uh, the end of the service day, uh, which is currently eight PM, and proposing to make the end of the service day six PM, Monday through Friday. Uh, and that's because ridership is very, very low from six PM to eight PM on Dialeride. And on Saturday, we're not proposing any changes, and Sunday, we're proposing to, uh, reduce the end of the service day from four PM to three PM. Now, for passenger fares, as I mentioned, we want to, uh, or I am proposing that we lower the, uh, the current, uh, fare on CAT for the general public from two dollars to one fifty, so that is more consistent with the fares that are charged by other small urban transit systems that are similar to Series. Um, so the only fare that wouldn't be reduced would be the fare for, um, seniors and disabled. So everybody would pay the same fare of a dollar fifty. Um, no one, uh, would see their fares go up, and in the case of, uh, senior-disabled persons, the fare would not go down. Now, it's important that we generate as much revenue off of the, um, from the passengers who ride the CAT system as possible, because it's gonna be very difficult for, uh, the CAT system to meet the twenty percent ratio. And so that's why we're proposing a single fare, uh, for everyone, and, uh, no, no discounts for anyone. Um, that is gonna be important to ensuring that that service meets the twenty percent ratio. Now, we're also proposing one new fare, which would be a thirty-one-day pass, so that would be similar to a monthly pass, and the proposed charge for that would be thirty-nine dollars. Um, that, that's, um, seems to be commensurate with the number of days of service that, uh, the Series system operates, and, and when compared with other transit agencies, it seems to be a very reasonable figure. Uh, Series Dialeride, uh, currently, the general public pays only two dollars and fifteen cents to ride the Series Dialeride service, and the proposal is to, um, eliminate them from eligibility to ride the service. Therefore, creating a service that is only open to seniors and disabled and allowing it to be eligible for the ten percent ratio. Senior-disabled individuals, for this service to ma- meet a ten percent fare recovery ratio, fare for senior-disabled needs to increase. And I'm proposing to raise it from one dollar and fifty cents to three dollars. Uh, the Americans with Disabilities Act, um, ensures that the fares for the Dialeride service be no more than twice what the fares are for the regular fixed route service. And so this, um, fare meets that requirement. Um, this, uh, slide shows what the new route would look like. So, uh, in the dark blue is the new route. The, um, the yellow dots with the black around them would be the bus stops, um, that we would propose. And the light, uh, pastel colors are the existing routes that are currently operated. Now, at present, two buses are used to operate the four routes that are proposed to be, um, deleted. And one bus would be used to operate the proposed route that is shown in dark blue. That route would operate, um, uh, past each bus stop once each hour, so it would be hourly service. And that's essentially what is operated on the other routes that are being deleted. It's a much more direct route, so that, uh, passengers who get on the bus, uh, know that they are going to be, uh, transported to their destination in a reasonable amount of time. Um, so those, those two are very important principles in operating a successful transit service. Excuse me. Um, so the contract amendment with, uh, Store Transit, as I mentioned, um, we are reducing vehicle service hours, uh, that we pay, uh, Store Transit to operate. And there's a clause in the contract that, um, requires that the contract rate be renegotiated if the vehicle service hours drop by more than ten percent. Well, in our case, the vehicle service hours are dropping by about fifty percent. So, uh, if we were to renegotiate the vehicle service hour rate to, uh, cover the expenses incurred by Store, it would be somewhere around the, the tune of a hundred and one dollars per vehicle service hour. Now, my suggestion is to, uh, put together a contract amendment that would address the increases and decreases that might be faced over the course of the rest of this contract, uh, with Store. Hopefully, the system will be improved to the point where service could be added. Now, if service is added and, uh, again, the, the ten percent, um, uh, change in the number of vehicle service hours is reached, then we would be back here again, uh, with another amendment for you to consider. So what I'm proposing, instead of doing that, is to pay Store, uh, a fixed rate for their monthly expenses that don't ever change regardless of how much service they provide. And that's essentially the, the, their capitalized expenses attributable to the facility that they work out of, the buses that they operate, uh, the administrative expenses they incur. Those kinds of things are considered fixed expenses. The, um, the variable expenses they incur are based on the increase or decrease in the number of, um, vehicle service hours they operate. So, uh, they, um, are currently paid sixty-eight dollars per vehicle service hour, which covers everything. And what I'm proposing is to pay them about thirty-seven dollars per vehicle service hour, and they would, they would receive that amount in addition to the fixed rate that they would receive on a monthly basis. And so all in all, the, um, the annual savings that would be incurred as a result of making this, these changes to the, to the system and the changes to the contract with Store would be about two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, um, per year. Now, the, the transit service is not really short on revenue. The problem with the transit service is where that revenue comes from. So Series is eligible for a lot more, uh, TDA funds, Transportation Development Act funds from StandCOG than it currently receives. However, because of the fare box ratio, there is no way that, um, a larger transit system could be operated because the transit system can't meet the fare recovery ratio. So as a result, these changes are necessary, and all of these changes result in a reduction in the, the expenses that we incur, hopefully an increase in the amount of fare revenue that's received. And, and ultimately, uh, we should be able to meet the fare recovery ratio requirements, the fare box ratio requirements, and not incur any penalties. So the recommendation then is to puru- basically is to approve the proposals that we're, uh, making, uh, to you this evening, and approve amendment number one to the, uh, transit agreement that we have with Store Transit Services. And thank you very much. That's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just one question or comment I had. I know you put on the slide, a couple of slides ago, that there was a thirty-one-day pass. Would we be better sure that that said monthly pass?
Well, the, the reason it's called the thirty-one-day pass is because it's good for thirty-one days from the day that you first activate that pass. So essentially, the way, with the electronic fare boxes that Series has in its buses, um, a, an individual would, would buy the pass for thirty-nine dollars, and they could use that, uh, any, they could start that thirty-one-day clock anytime they wanted to, just by inserting that pass into the fare box. And it could be September fifteenth, and the fare box then prints September fifteenth on it, and it's good for thirty-one days after that. So it's, it's a great, uh, uh, item that, that means that you don't have to print thousands and thousands of monthly passes for each individual month of the year in different colors.
Okay. All right, great, thank you. Vice Mayor Klein?
Yeah, can you go back to the slide that shows, um, uh, Series Area Transit existing in proposed routes?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm looking at this thing, and essentially, I'm seeing all these stops in there on the new proposed route that look in cro- in close proximity to each other. Is that because of the two-way they're going back and forth?
Uh, yes, yeah, essentially, the, uh, let's say we're going down Hatch Road, for example, the stops shown on the, uh, underneath Hatch Road would be stops that we would use, uh, eastbound. shown on the, underneath Hatch Road would be stops that we would use eastbound, stops above Hatch Road are the ones that would be used westbound.
Okay. So, with that, with that, my question is, and we talked about it earlier, is what kind of comprehensive study was, was done that where, where the most needs were, where the most ridership was, was picked up or the transit need was done? Because looking at this proposal, it looks like, to me, over 75% of the total four routes is being eliminated, okay, which it, which it is because you're going from basically four routes to one, but, but where is the most, most needed at? Is it over off Hackett and Blaker Avenue? Is it, is it east of Whitmore and Mitchell? I mean, those are areas that now are getting, you know, is it part of Herndon? Those are, those are areas that are being depleted now.
Uh, yes, they are. So, one thing I should explain, that of these four routes that are operated, only one of, that are currently operated, only one route is actually operated all day long, and that's the, the green route, Route A. So, that route is served every hour of every day. The second route, which is the pink route, Route B, that is served all hours of the day except two hours. In the early morning and in the afternoon, Route B is not served because the bus that is usually used on Route B is instead used on Route D, and it's used to serve schools. So, for one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon, Route B does not operate. That bus instead is operated on Route D. And we found that Route D is rarely used by anyone. Now, Route C, the green route, that route is only operated on Saturdays and Sundays. So, it's, it's not something that is operated on a Monday through Friday basis, and that's operated with one bus on Saturdays when the service transports about 30 passengers a day, and on Sunday, that Route C operates and carries about 20 passengers a day. So, those ridership levels are very, very low and can't be sustained if we need to meet the fare-recovery ratio. Now, the, so, we're going from a two-bus, two buses out all day long to one bus all day long. We're trying to continue to provide service on an hourly basis, which is what is currently provided. That's about as infrequent a level of service that can be provided on a fixed route service and expect people to continue to ride. So, what we've tried to do here is serve as much territory as we possibly can with one bus in one hour so that we can maintain the hourly service at each bus stop, and we can provide two-way service on the streets that this route would use. That's very important for people as well. For example, if you see a giant one-way loop, if we were to traverse around Series by going Hatch to Mitchell, down to Series Central Valley High School, over to Hackett and Crow's Landing, and then back up to, back up to Hatch and Herndon, then you have the bus going in one direction the entire time. So, what happens then is if a person is at, lives at, let's say, Central and Hatch, and takes the bus to Mitchell and Hatch to go to Walmart, that's a great trip. That only takes a few minutes. But getting back home is a completely different story because, remember, the bus is only running in one direction around that, that big loop. So, the passenger gets back on the bus at Walmart and then has to ride the bus for 45 minutes to get home, when home is just a half a mile walk from where they live, or a one-mile walk from where they live. So, that's why you can't cover as much territory as, as one might think, and it's because of the importance of providing two-way service on a fixed route. That's what gets people to ride fixed routes. And with the one-way service, it enables you to cover more geographic area, but it also reduces the number of people that want to ride because it's so inconvenient. So, we try to cover as much territory as we possibly could with the one bus and provide two-way service and 60-minute frequency at each bus stop.
My next question is, has consideration been, been made for retirement homes, care facilities? I mean, I know there's a retirement home over off of Whitmore and Blaker.
Mm-hmm.
Whitmore, I believe Whitmore and Blaker, there's a retirement home over there, but yet, huh?
Richard Way, isn't there one?
Yeah, and I think there might, yeah, there is one over off, off Richard. But, and I don't see where there's any consideration for, is there ridership? I mean, you know, it looks like Route B used to go by there.
Mm-hmm.
It goes around to Blaker and goes down to Service, and I catch it back there.
You, you can see it on the, on the map, Route B does. Now...
But the new proposed route, my, my question is, has any consideration been for retirement or care facilities or anything like that?
Yes. So, what we did is look at the ridership from every bus stop for a two-day period, and during those two days, there was no ridership from that particular, at the bus stop adjacent to that particular facility. So, if there is no ridership over the course of a two-day period from a particular bus stop, there is no transit system that can support that kind of service to a bus stop that has no ridership. If, if Series is really intent on meeting the fare, fare-box ratio of 20%, it can't afford to service bus stops that, that don't have any riders over the course of a two-day period.
But is an analysis on two days substantial? I mean, what if, what if you did it for Tuesday and Wednesday, but most of your ridership was on a Thursday or Friday?
Um, as I said before, if there is no ridership over the course of a two-day period, and it wasn't a Monday and a Tuesday, it was a Tuesday and a Wednesday, if there is no ridership over the course of a two-day period, you can't make up for that lack of ridership by having a few people who might ride on Thursday and Friday. It just isn't cost-effective. And it, and it would be wonderful, and I'd love to be able to provide that level of service, but it's not going to meet that objective of, of a 20% fare-recovery ratio. So, if, if we in the city of Series wanted to do that, we would need to be prepared to supplement the transit system with general fund revenues.
Okay, but, you know, we're, we're doing a big proposal right here as far as expand, or eliminating four routes and making one route. And what my objective, or I guess what I'm looking at is saying, okay, if we're doing this and ridership is going to be changed, okay, let's say your proposal, the route right now is a, is a Monday, Wednesday, and Friday route, but yet you have a Tuesday, Thursday along the Frontage Road and back over towards the, the west side of, west side of town. You know, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
And ridership, once, you know, once the new thing is here, you know, just like the fare, and I understand where we're going as far as fare-box ratio and everything like that, but, you know, we're eliminating a lot of services that, to me, in certain areas that possibly need it.
Yes, I, I think you're absolutely right, and I fully agree. There's a lot of areas that are not going to be getting service with this new route that would need service. There's no question about it. But the bottom line is that you have to make a decision about which areas to serve and which areas to not serve while still meeting the objective of providing service to every bus stop every hour, because if you don't provide that kind of consistency, then your bus riders won't, won't use the system. Bus riders thrive on consistency, so that's something that, that in my mind is very important to, to include with a bus route anytime one is established.
So, and, and I'm looking at, with the elimination of the routes, how much of the actual fare-box is being eliminated? Because, you know, like I say, there could be ridership for Thursdays and, and that wasn't taken under consideration. The other thing is, is, to me, is certain areas that we're not looking at, that ridership, if it's doctor's appointments and they know they only get bus service on Thursdays, you know, I think they, me personally, would make other arrangements. I do that with my job when I have a doctor's appointment. I make, I, I know which days are good for me to do something, and that's the way I do my schedule. My dad, happy birthday today, turned 82 years old, he, he rides CAT. He's got his driver's license, he rides CAT. He knows where, he can do it, and when he can ride it, and, and he takes the 25 cents and does his transfers, and he goes out to the mall, and, you know, he, he uses it. And, you know, my concern is, you know, are we eliminating a big portion of our fare-box on, that we're missing on certain days of the week?
Um, there, there's no question that there would be some people that wouldn't ride any longer, but what we would hope to do with a more consistent service than what we've had in the past, and a more direct service, that the service that is left would attract more passengers per vehicle service hour, and that's, that's the key to maintaining the fare-box ratio, is to get more passengers riding every hour that that system is operating. What we're experiencing now with Route B, for example, that has a fare-recovery ratio of somewhere between 4% and 5%. The routes that operate on Sa- Saturday and Sunday are about 1% to 2%. And there's no transit system that can sustain that kind of ridership and, and meet the 20% ratio. So, there will be people that will not find it convenient to ride. Hopefully, there will be more people who will ride on a regular basis because the service is, is consistent and it's direct, and the travel times are reasonable. And that's what you need in order to have those everyday riders, or people that ride four out of five days, or three out of five days. If you depend upon only people who will ride once every so often, and only because they absolutely need to get to a doctor's appointment, those are not the kind of people that sustain or enable you to maintain a fair ratio that, that the state requires. You need those everyday riders from school, from work, from, you name it. Those people that ride every day are absolutely essential to the service meeting that 20% ratio.
So, the route you have here, I, I think the question that he's looking for, the route that you have, that you've chosen, shows the highest percentage of ridership based upon the other routes that are there, and it's your recommendation that this is the only one that would be sustainable?
Well, it's...
That's with this two-day study, though.
There is as many different routes as there are streets in, in Series, of course, but, and, and, but this is my recommendation for the route that I think has the best chance of being successful based on my 37 years of experience developing transit routes.
Okay. Councilmember Rhino?
I believe Councilmember or Vice Mayor Klein isn't done.
Well, one, I, I do. Okay, so, the transfer to, at Kmart.
Mm-hmm.
How often does that transfer bus come there?
From Modesto?
Yeah.
That bus comes every 30 minutes. There's another bus that comes from Stanislaw Regional Transit about, I think it's about eight times, eight or 10 times a day.
Okay, so, so every 30 minutes, so, and our bus would be there at least once every hour?
Yes.
Okay.
Did I understand you to say that it's the students that seem to use the CAT the most?
No, no, it's not, but that's what we would hope to do with any bus route, is to gain ridership from students, because typically, for example, in the, in Modesto, students make up a good 25% of the ridership. Here, in, in Series, you know, just looking at the, the data, there are very few students that are riding from either Series High or Central Valley High, and those students that are riding are using the Dial-A-Ride service. They're not using the fixed route service. Students should be using fixed route service. That's the, the cost-effective way to serve students, and that, and there should be many, many more than what are currently riding from, from the routes that are there.
But if you, but if you look at the proposed route, I don't see, I see where we're eliminating going-by schools, so how are we going to pick up more kids if we're not even, if we're no longer going by the schools? If I look at the blue line?
Right. Yeah, I, I realize that there's a lot of grammar schools, elementary schools, and junior high schools that are being eliminated from that service area, but the bulk of the ridership from students comes from high school students.
But we're not going by Series High then, are we?
Well, we're, we're, we're within an easy walking distance from Series High, and we do service right next to Central Valley High. So, the Central Valley High kids, I would think, would be most likely to ride because they are the, they are on the edge of town. Series High kids are, you know, right in the middle of town, and there's a very good chance that they would either walk or, or bike home, or something of that nature as opposed to, to riding the bus, but this, the Central Valley kids, and there are those that attend Central Valley who live all over town, just like with Series High, they can live all over town. But the Series, Central Valley kids are going to have a much longer trip to make than the central, than the Series High kids are, so the odds are that there would be more riders from Central Valley High School than Series. So, I, I think with good service to the, to Central Valley High, we should expect to see several students a day riding from that high school.
But for the Series High School, I don't see where it's an easy walk to a bus stop.
Um, well, it's, based on, on walking that distance myself, it didn't seem like it was a significant walk, but as I said, there's a very good chance that those kids would not ride the bus anyway because Series High School is located essentially in the center of town, and so not all of their trips are particularly long.
But, but the kids that go to Series High, I believe, also live north of Hatch Road, don't they?
Yes.
So, then how, how are they going to get to Series High School if they live north of Hatch Road?
Well, they can, they aren't using the route that's there right now. There's maybe two or three students a day that ride on the route that is currently there. So, even if we lost those two or three students per day because they didn't want to walk to the new route, that's not a particularly big loss if we, if that enables us to serve other parts of town where the ridership would be greater, for example, Central Valley High School. If we were to provide, I'll just say it this way, if we were to change the route to provide really good service to Series High, we'd have to eliminate service west of the freeway if we were to meet our objective of hourly service. So, I tried to make this route as, as direct and fast through the area on the east side of the freeway where new people are going to ride so that we could get across the freeway to the areas west of the freeway where there is substantial ridership from the, those neighborhoods west of the freeway.
Do you know how many riders we have monthly on Dial-A-Ride and on CAT?
Uh, well, on, on a daily basis, we have about 80 passengers on CAT, excuse me, on SEDAR, and about 90 passengers on CAT.
On a daily basis?
On a daily basis, Monday through Friday.
Okay. That's all.
So, just a couple of questions I would have. So, this is your proposed route. I'm, I'm assuming it's based on what you've said, your expertise.
I'm assuming it's based on what you've said, your expertise. If there was another route chosen, we're still not guaranteed that the blue route's going to support itself. Is that correct?
Uh, no.
So, we could be having this conversation a year from now, and we have no service at all?
It's entirely possible that this blue route will not meet the twenty percent fare recovery ratio. There are no guarantees. All kinds of things can happen between now and then. Ridership on transit systems fluctuates in a lot of different ways, and no one can really explain it. So, yeah, I can't make any guarantees that this will meet twenty percent.
Okay, so the question is, the fare box ratio was administered by the COG. Is it the COG that also sets that requirement, or is that a state requirement?
It's a state requirement.
Okay, so, if we, if Mr. Klein, who sits on the COG, went and got the COG to change that, he'd have to get the state to do it as well?
Yes, yes. If the state legislature were to change that fare recovery ratio to something that was more achievable, then I don't think we would be talking about the kind of service changes that we are this evening.
So, what this really boils down to, and this policy board has to, you know, come to grips with it, as well as, you know, our citizens, we all want service, we all feel that this is needed. I'll be the first one to say, I don't want to get rid of any of this. But in order to keep this, based on the state's requirements, we either have to dip into the general fund and support it, or we have to find a ridership that can support it. And from what I'm hearing right now, we don't have the ridership to support the costs to do this.
That's correct, we don't.
Okay. Councilmember Rhino?
Do we have to have cat? Could we go strictly to dial-a-ride?
We could.
And then we might make our twenty percent, and it would be available to everyone?
It's very typical to have a dial-a-ride service open to the general public in communities the size of Series. Unfortunately, and in that case, if we were in a county under five-hundred thousand population, and we were not within an urbanized area, we would only have to meet a ten percent recovery ratio, fare box ratio. But because the city of Series is part of the Modesto urbanized area in a county over five-hundred thousand population, and it's a general public series, service, if we were to open dial-a-ride, or keep dial-a-ride open to the general public, it would have to meet a twenty percent ratio. And essentially, there are no dial-a-ride systems that meet twenty percent.
Could we do cat instead of dial-a-ride?
I'm sorry, do...
Could we do the fixed route instead of the dial-a-ride?
Oh, no. The Americans with Disabilities Act requires us to offer a dial-a-ride service for people with disabilities to complement the fixed route service that we operate.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Klein? Is it a possibility to run a one-way route and cover more area within the hour instead of having a two-way route? So, you would be going essentially north down on Mitchell, west on Hatch, do your circle at Richland, Nadine, and Herndon, maybe go south on Herndon, over towards, you know, Central, Blaker service, back up Fifth Sixth Street over in that area, and do a one-way route? And stay within your one hour?
I'm not sure I followed the route you're suggesting, but I believe you're suggesting a, one large loop route that would essentially...
Correct.
...cover the circumference of the city.
And stay within your hour?
Yes. That could be done, but based on my experience, your ridership would be very low. And that's because of the situation that I was just telling you about, where you have someone who lives at the intersection of Hatch and Central, wants to ride over to Mitchell and Hatch to go to Walmart, and then, so that's maybe a three-minute trip to get to Walmart. But then, in order to get home, they have to get on that bus, it's going in the same direction, and they have to ride it all the way down Mitchell, by, you know, down service, up Crow's Landing Road, around the loop at Herndon, Nadine, and Richland, and then back home. And that would take them forty-five minutes. And so, there's something in transit called the ice cream rule. And so, you never want to develop a one-way loop so big that on your trip home from the grocery store, you're on the bus so long that your ice cream melts. So, forty-five minutes on a bus, going from anywhere back home in a city the size of Series, is not going to be conducive to building ridership. So, I highly recommend that you have a two-way route, a route that operates both directions on the same street. Except at some point, of course, you have to make a loop of some kind to get around back in the direction you need to go. And that's what we have with Hackett, Blaker service, and Central, back to Pine.
Councilmember Rossett?
These are some good questions. Fred, I got a question for you, though. You said that you, years of experience, thirty-seven years, right? I'm in education, I teach at Series High School, I see cat a lot, by the way. You're the expert, and the things that you're, the questions we're asking, you already would be thinking that that's, or you would already done the research, hypothetically speaking, in regards to this working, or possibly not. I mean, you said it might not work, right? Obviously, it might not work. But we're sitting here looking at two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars to our general fund, that if we don't make a decision, or at least take a shot at using the route that the expert came up with, right, then, you know, I think we might be doing ourselves a disservice. There's people here that it's going to be affected by, obviously. And if we move the lines, then there's going to be other people here that it's going to be affected by. The one question I have is, how can we, and maybe you don't know this, and maybe there's no answer for this, how can we reach out to these folks and get them at least some way to be able to travel, right?
Well, we will, excuse me, we will continue to operate the Series Area Dial-a-ride Service to, for anyone who's either a senior or disabled. So, that's going to be available for anyone in town who meets the criteria. And it's a very loose criteria, so there will be a lot of people that will be eligible to ride Series Dial-a-ride. Fixed route, the other alternative to that, I mean, and there are other alternatives, there's subsidized taxi services and things like that, but typically speaking, they won't meet a twenty percent ratio. I guess it's possible, you know, to do a subsidized taxi service and price it such that it always does meet the twenty percent ratio. So, whatever credit you give a person on a subsidized taxi ensures that they pay twenty percent of the cost of the ride. So, that's been done. So, there's other things out there that are available, and there's always the Uber and Lyft, too, for folks who have a little more money than what it takes to ride transit. But, I mean, certainly, that's something that I could look into more, if you would direct me to, to see what other options are out there that we could use to supplement the cat and SEDAR system with. But I think, for the time, at this moment, I would stick with my recommendation, though, that we make these changes. And just one correction, I just wanted to say that the penalty is probably, would probably be about one-hundred thousand dollars. The two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-dollar figure is the savings on how much we would spend with store transit services. So, we'd save about two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars a year in what we spend with them. And the penalty that we would pay for not meeting the fare recovery ratio, if we kept the service in operation that we currently have, would be approximately one-hundred thousand dollars.
Per year.
Per year.
Councilmember Rhino?
I've never Ubered, but apparently you guys have. How much does an Uber ride cost? Does anybody know?
Depends on how far you're going.
Well, okay, say from...
It's not a dollar fifty.
Oh, is it really?
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not?
No. Not even close.
Okay, so, that isn't a good alternative, then, for people who are using our public transit? If we limit dial-a-ride to seniors and disabled, or seniors and disabled persons, do we have enough of those riders to reach the ten percent fare box ratio?
Yes, in a city this size, we would.
Okay.
It's a matter of the contract operator, operator, operating the vehicles in the field as efficiently as possible, so that, dial-a-ride's a shared ride system, so it picks people up and drops people off en route to various destinations. So, theoretically, an individual is always going to have somebody else onboard the van with them.
So, if you needed to go to a doctor's appointment, can you call ahead and make a reservation?
Yes, absolutely.
Question for you on this, I know it's a two-year deal. Will you come back to us after a year of this route and let us know where we stack?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, annually, we need to, the city needs to submit a claim to STANCOG for the amount of money it needs to operate the service for the coming fiscal year. And in that claim, it has all kinds of operating statistics. So, even if I didn't make a specific effort to come back and tell you about it, that information would be in that claim, too, and you would see it.
Okay. If there aren't any more questions, I do want to open it up to the public to speak on this comment. Is there any other questions? Okay, with that, I want to open it up to the public to see if anyone would like to speak. If so, please come up to the podium if you could.
Good afternoon. My name's Cesar Rubio. I just want to comment on, it is going to be a big change if this does go through. We do depend on this service to get around Series, to get to our families, to get to our pharmacies, to get to our place of family. It does seem to be pretty extreme, what they're trying to do, cut off a lot of the route. It just seems to be a big, long route. Even though it's going both ways, it's just, it's missing a lot of the community. I can't see the map, but what I've been told, it is going to be very limited. You know, I depend a lot on the public transportation to visit my family and go to where I need to go, especially when I'm connecting with Modesto. And it does seem like it's going to be very limited. I understand that more ridership needs to be, you know, coming up for us to sustain the current routes, but I don't know if maybe, I haven't been using cat for that long, I'm barely getting into the cat because it was so, ever since they changed start from Houston, I'm able to come down here and visit family. The other way, I'd have to go all the way to Modesto and come all the way back, and it was taking me almost three hours just to get to my mom's house. Right now, it's actually only taken me twenty minutes. You know, by the time I get to the Kmart and take the cat, I'm here. You know, it's a pretty awesome system they have right now. I understand it all comes down to money, but if they're going to cut the rides, the service, does that mean the administrative part is also being cut? Or is that just something that it's only affecting the riders? Also, I don't know if maybe, if they do want to make a quicker route, the way they're trying to do it right now, I don't know if setting up a transfer station where both routes meet in the middle of Series, instead of making a long, I don't know if they do it right now or not, where both, I know they show up at Kmart, but maybe inside of Series to really dedicate something for the city, to where we wouldn't have to travel all the way around to get, like he was saying, back to our place of residence. I don't know if, maybe setting up a transfer station in the middle of town, Series High, where they have a big opening, there's really nothing out there, where maybe the two buses, one takes off back that way, and the other one takes off back that way, where they wouldn't have to meet up so far out of town to reroute where they're going. It's just suggestions. I really love the way it is right now, because it's more accessible to my family, to my pharmacy, groceries, and I just hope that we, there's a solution for all parties involved. And that's all I wanted to express.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
My name is Jenny, and I like to take B because it takes me to Kmart to go to the doctors, and I take A to go to Walmart and to my, to pick up my medicine. And I like taking the bus, because my kids are at work, and I have no way to go to the doctors, I have to go to Modesto by Kmart to get Modesto and get a transfer, but I love taking the bus. I hope they don't stop the bus. B, because I live over there off of Service and Brown, and that's kind of far to have the bus. Is that right? I love taking the bus. And there'll be, my kids go, why you take the bus for? Because I love to take the bus and meet people in the bus. So, I don't have a car, so I can't afford it, so I like the bus. So, I hope they keep it. So, okay, that's it. Thank you. So, have a nice day.
Good afternoon, maybe, I hope you understand my, I don't speak probably enough English, but I just want to say that when I moved to Series, I was very happy because we have dial-a-ride. And when I found out that we're going to have a cat, I was so excited and very happy because I am an independent lady and I don't drive. I only see with one eye, and I like to be independent. I go to the store and get my groceries, I go to Kmart and take the bus to go to Modesto if I need to go to the doctor, and it's going to be very sad, it's not, I am not the only one, it's a lot of people that come and take the bus. I don't say that I take the bus five days or seven days a week, but I would take the bus at least three to four days, and I know all the drivers. And I know them since I moved here to Series, and it's going to be very sad if they do that.
Good afternoon. My name is Belva, and I am not only a Series cat rider, I'm a start bus and a max bus. And you do not understand the importance that it is for people that don't have the money to operate and maintain a vehicle, and knowing that the bus stop is right there, knowing that it's going to be there at twenty-nine after, that's their bus time to be there, and they've got five minutes, and they're always in that time schedule. And it doesn't matter if the bus goes both ways or back ways. If there's only one big route, like there is on Saturdays and Sundays, whenever we get on it, the bus drivers tease us and play with us, and everything, say, all right, I know where you're going, but now we're making the big loop scenic route. It doesn't matter about ice cream melting, that's the route we take. And you change any of this, you know, it's going to really throw a broomstick in our spokes. And if you want to raise something, make the dial-a-ride less for the more dependent of the seniors and disabled. I'm both, but I don't ride dial-a-ride, I ride cat. And fortunately, I'm right here on Sixth Street, and I'm right here by all of the bus stops. I can get on cat and go wherever I want, or walk down a little bit by the library, get on start, go into Modesto, get my transfer, and go everywhere I want to in Modesto, and then right back. We depend on that bus. And my aunt, I take her, she's eighty-three years old, I take her once a week on Saturdays. We leave, I go over and pick her up on the bus, and they stop at a non-scheduled stop because it's a block and a half closer to her. Instead of stopping at Glasgow, they stop at Calcagno for her, and Dylan is the driver. And off to Walmart we go, and he drops us off there. But that's only one, it's, well, twice a month, and it's not every week. And it's not every week. And just knowing that it's there dependable, that's what we like. Don't change the routes. Please, we depend on that.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Karen, Caltech. And I take the dial-a-ride, um, to work and back home. So it picks me up at my house, and it also drops me off. I don't have transportation right now, that's the only transportation that I have. Um, that's going to be a big change, I guess, but I'm hoping that they won't change it.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Leonard Shepherd, I don't ride the bus. However, I can see that the good old state of California again has screwed everybody because they're making requirements. They don't care about the riders of the bus and whatever, wherever they go and whatever they have to do. They're, the legislature's done another good screwing of the people. Because they want you to get out of your car and ride public transportation. And then they make riding public transportation unless you're in a big city. They make it so you can't ride public transportation. I don't understand. So the, the old saying, round and round and round it goes, where it stops, nobody knows. And that seems to be the way it is in small cities like Series. With, and I don't know how much, uh, what's the, the senior age for dial-a-ride? Is it 50, like some senior discounts? Is it 60? Is it 65? Is it 55? I don't know, because I don't ride it. It never seems, public transportation never seems to go where I want to go. And it doesn't seem to go when I want to go. And these people that depend on it, and they depend on it for their going to the doctor, the grocery store and all that, and what are we doing to them? Yanking the rug out from them. I just, I don't understand. Uh, I, there's got to be some way that the people can still be served without making the bottom line for some legislator. Call Adam Gray. Call former mayor. You know, just tell him. We got people in Series that you're screwing over by taking away their bus ride.
Okay, anyone else?
Jerry Gelliazi, uh, 3700 Collins, Space 15. You know, I don't agree with the, the cutting downs in the mental field. People depend on the rides. But I've noticed in this, on the, on the proposed route, excuse me, I forgot your name. The proposed route goes right by Fifth Street, Sixth Street, and Whitmore? Well, that's two blocks from high school. You know, when I was going to Series High, I rode my bike three miles, so... And where I live on Collins, I avoid the school at, at, during school hours. I've seen the traffic at Mitchell Road backed up west of Collins. I've seen the traffic backed up at Central, almost to Collins. So I avoid that area. So when you think about the, the other things, but the, the emissions, accidents, emergency services, if they have to get through there, the, and all the down in Central, that whole place is clustered during school for Central Valley. If you get more kids on, on the bus to ride during, uh, Central Valley, it would eliminate a lot of other problems. And when, and Councilwoman Rhino was concerned about the grammar schools, I don't know how many parents were going to let small kids ride the bus like that. You know, most of them want to take their kids to school. And plus, grammar schools are, are low population. When you're dealing with the high schools, you're dealing with what, up to 1,000 people? You know, when you're dealing with, you know, 500 cars, that's a lot of traffic. And it's a lot of other issues. Thank you.
I barely ride the bus, to be honest. And I kind of feel intimidated because everybody's here is older than me by like, probably like a decade. But to be honest, I feel like, I see why you're doing this, and it's a good reason. But the route that you're making passes my high school, which I really do like going. And the bus sometimes does pass by there. I do think I should probably take it because it's faster than just walking for like, a mile or two. And when I do, I enjoy it because I talk to new people, I make acquaintances, I start just making conversation. And it's just, seeing how it doesn't go there at all now, it basically just, it takes, uh, I would have to go at one of the bus stops and then walk another, like, half a mile to get there. It would really just make more people not really, I wouldn't say communicate more, but it wouldn't make most people that I used to go with, I used to talk with, I'm familiar with, not go there anymore because now the places that they go aren't there on anymore. And seeing how you're probably going to raise the fare for it, they're probably going to get discouraged by it and seeing, well, rather just walk there or use my car because it's going to cost less and rather just pay $5 of gas than take the bus. Just, just walk the rest of the way and not get there all the way. So really, you should really just keep how it is and just not really change anything. So, yeah.
Any other comments?
One thing I forgot to, I was thinking too, when you said it was, uh, when you change this, it'll save $265,000. That's also, you would also add that if you kept this, you would have to pay that plus another $100,000 in penalties. So you're talking about almost another $400,000 to maintain the system as it is, correct?
Well, it's not quite, that doesn't quite work that way. But if we don't make changes to the, the, the routes that we have and do something different, we will be subject to a $100,000 penalty that will come out of the general fund, which funds our police and fire.
Right. And then also, by making the changes, you're also saving another $265,000. So that's quite a bit of money savings, correct? That, that would have to come out of the general fund, out of, out of fire and, and police and all other services to maintain a bus route.
No, that's not correct. That $286,000 would be less money that we would get from our state reimbursement. So it would lower the operating costs related to transit. So it's a separate fund that would be more cost-effective.
Oh, okay.
So it's separate.
We're really only talking the $100,000.
The $100,000 is the general fund. The other are funded, the, the transit, as Fred indicated, the TDA funds are where that $286,000 will come from primarily. It's a little more complicated than that, I'm giving you the, the simplified version.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and direction.
Well, first off, I mean, I don't ride it, my dad rides it. I don't like the proposal. I don't like going from four routes to one route. I, you know, don't know if, if, if that is the, the best scenario with the two-day study. But yet, it goes back to a thing that, you know, by trade, I'm a salesman. So I've got to turn around and, and, and listen and, and understand where, um, Mr. Kavanaugh has, has been doing this for years and, and the study, and, and nothing is, nothing is set in stone. But we've got to try something and see what it's going to do. Because ultimately, you know, I sit on the StanCOG board, and it's not StanCOG that is, is turning around and taking the money away by themselves. It's what the state has dictated as far as, you know, the fare box ratio. So, and StanCOG is directed from, from the state that this is what must be done. Uh, I don't know what the best route, route would be. I mean, I'm not happy with three-fourths of, of, of the city being eliminated. Uh, I would like to see a one-way route all the way around, but I do understand, you know, what Mr. Kavanaugh is saying. So with that, I mean, I think that ultimately, we have to try something. Otherwise, we're going to lose everything. Uh, I would like to see something come back within, uh, I don't know, a year. Uh, and see where we stand as far as ridership. See where we stand as far as fare box ratio, because we do have a two-year process. Uh, ultimately, I'd like to see six months, you know, to see if there's changes. I don't know if that's a long enough timeframe. But to me, that's a, that's a timeframe that's long enough compared to, and no offense, the two, the two-day study. So, uh, not that I want to change things in six months, but I'd like to see if we've capitalized on anything, if we, if we've moved anywhere. So with that being said, you know, I, I, I have to say that I have to support this. Because otherwise, the downside is, we're going to lose so much more in, in other things.
Councilwoman Rhino?
Can we reduce, um, from four to two? What would that do, instead of four to one route?
Well, the, the important thing... Can you hear me? Okay. Yeah. Uh, the important thing is to reduce the number of vehicle service hours operated. So even though there's, there's four routes, they only require the use of two buses. So what we need to do is cut one of those buses out of the mix and reduce the vehicle service hours by, that, that would be reduced by eliminating one bus. So we, um, reducing from four routes to two routes really doesn't make any difference because that's not representative of the number of vehicle service hours operated. So that's why I said we, we need to cut the number of vehicle service hours in half. And we would do that by reducing from the four routes that are currently there to the one route that I've shown. That, that does reduce, uh, to the extent that we need to reduce.
Well, my problem is that, I understand, we don't want another hit on our general fund. But being fortunate to have a vehicle, being fortunate to be able-bodied enough that if I was off of a, a bus route and I didn't have a car, I would be able to walk to it. But then when I look at where some of these areas are just totally, they're not served, they're not going to be served at all. And if someone is not a senior or disabled, how are, how are they going to get to something that we take for granted? Just going to a doctor's appointment, being able to go to the grocery store? That really bothers me. So I don't think I can support it. I can't support the change.
Question for you. Excuse, excuse me. Okay. Question for you. Um, on the, uh, the fine that we would get, is it, would it always be $100,000? Or could it be more if ridership dropped further?
It could be more. Uh, it, it all depends on where ridership is. Uh, it could be less too, if for some reason ridership picked up, um, very quickly and significantly. So it's only an estimate. And, and it's all based completely on how much fare revenue is brought in by passengers.
But wouldn't the reality is if we went with this and we saw that we were getting, meeting and exceeding the fare box ratios, wouldn't we just add more route back in?
I, I would hope that that would be the, the ultimate outcome, is that we are able to meet that 20% ratio and allow us to, uh, extend the service. Um, add, add a route, add, probably what we would do first would be to add hours of service, perhaps add Saturday service, and see how that went. And because if we do add another route, that does require the addition of one entire bus. And so that becomes a very expensive proposition.
So we were, we can do, we were able to do the four routes with two buses, but we can't do two routes with one bus?
Right. And, and the reason we can't do, we can't do, uh, two full routes with one bus is because the, the blue route that you see would, would consume all of the time that that bus is in service. Now, the currently, uh, only one route of the current routes uses one bus all day long. The, the route that you see here called Route C in green, that only operates on Saturdays and Sundays. So it doesn't, doesn't operate at all Monday through Friday. Um, and then secondly, Route B and Route D split a bus between them. So you can really look at Route B and Route D as one route because they together only use the resources of one bus. If that makes sense.
Yep, I, I, I get that. I just, yeah. I, I know Councilmember Vice Mayor Klein talked about one big loop, but I've had some experience riding on bus systems, and I'm not sure you're going to get around the whole city in 45 minutes. I just counted 41 bus stops here. And if you attribute three minutes per stop, and I think that's pretty aggressive, that's a two-hour deal just to get all the way around.
Well, the, essentially, what it would take to get from Hatch and Herndon down to Central Valley High School, that's about a 25-minute trip.
So you don't stop at every one of the?
We, no. Very rarely do we stop at every single bus stop. The only time you stop at a bus stop is if somebody wants to get off there, or if you, if you see someone at that bus stop that wants to get on.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, you could, you could make that, that trip in an hour. And then, but then the big question becomes, how many people are going to want to ride it? Um, and, and it's very difficult to know for sure that more people would ride the system that I've shown here than would ride that, a one-way loop that took 50 minutes to get around the city. But I'm saying from my experience, uh, fewer people would ride a one-hour, one-way loop than would ride the route that I've shown here, which is a two-way route that is, enables people to make quick, direct trips.
But if that was all that we offered was a one-way, you don't think people would do that?
Oh, some people would. There, there's no question about it. But it really, uh, would eliminate a lot of people from using the service that, um, we need to ride on a daily basis to enable us to meet that 20% fare recovery ratio. So if, if you go to, uh, uh, most cities that have transit systems, uh, well, I would say virtually every city you go to that has a transit system, you're going to be hard-pressed to find a route that is a one-hour loop. You'll find a lot of half-hour loops, but not very many one-hour loops. In my experience, because I've tried one-hour loops, and they just don't work. Nobody, nobody likes to ride them.
Okay. I got a question. Let me push my button. There you go. Councilman Rosset? Have we ever made the fare box?
Uh, back when the fare box recovery ratio was 15%, we came close. So, um, prior to 2010, when the population of the county was less than 500,000, the fare recovery ratio was 15% for the services. And they did come close. Uh, but, um, then additional service was added to, uh, to, to the initial route. So Route A was the first route that operated within Series. And then a second route was added, which dropped the fare recovery ratio down to 10%. Um, and then the last couple of years, ridership has been dropping more. Uh, so, yeah, at one point, the fixed route system was close to 15% when it was only one route. Uh, but then it dropped as the service expanded and ridership, um, then dropped later on.
So I mean, I'm just sitting there trying to, it's like, I use the acronym WCS, worst-case scenario, right? Because you're, again, Fred, the expert, Mr. Kavanaugh, sorry.
Fred.
It's, uh, no matter what we do, we're not going to... It's, uh, no matter what we do, we're not gonna reach it. I'm, I'm guessing, because we haven't reached it in the last six years. Right? And so, I, I'm just throwing something out here. I'm looking at all these possible stops, and obviously, I, I drive by in the morning, there was a young lady, as I, I teach a zero period at the high school, and it's 6:30 in the morning, and she was probably younger, 18, 19, going to college, taking the CAT system there off, off Moffett Avenue, you know. Every morning I'd see her. I thought, wow, that's pretty dedicated to, uh, getting her education. But I'm sitting there thinking, cut out a couple of these, throw in a couple stops here on the, uh, I can't see.
Pardon?
On the Route B, and the same thing possibly could happen. You know? I mean, it's, because I'm guessing, e- even though that you think this could be a possibility, and I, you're the expert, I'm not. I, I'm going with what you're saying. But at the same time, too, I'm sitting there thinking, I didn't know that we hadn't reached it in the last six years. So now my mind's a little bit twisted in regards to just kinda looking at this and, and seeing that if somebody had to get someplace, well, at least they'd be able to do it for the next year or two. What happens, though, if we, we get fined? Can we just say, we, we don't want, no offense, we don't want the CAT system, we don't want any transportation? That can't happen, right? We have to have some sort of transportation because of the laws that are in place.
That's right. So, so the way it, it would work, excuse me, is if the CAT sys- system did not meet its 20% fare recovery ratio, then we would, um, determine that the CAT system is not reasonable to operate. So, so the way the law reads is that you have to meet your unmet transit needs that are reasonable to meet. But one of the first criteria for reasonable is that it has to meet the fare, the state mandated fare recovery ratio. So if you have a service that can't meet that fare recovery ratio, then you don't have to operate it. Um, and that would leave us then with the, uh, the dial-a-ride service. And the dial-a-ride service, I'm, I'm fairly confident can meet the 10% ratio, because I've seen many, many, many dial-a-ride services that are only open to seniors and disabled persons meet the 10% ratio. Uh, so I'm, I'm confident, especially with the fare at $3 per passenger, that dial-a-ride will meet that 10% ratio. Um, so, but I know dial-a-ride will never meet a 20% ratio. That's why I'm suggesting going from, from a general public dial-a-ride to a, a, um, senior disabled-only dial-a-ride. And CAT is, is really more up in the air. Uh, it's gonna be, um, difficult under any circumstances for CAT to meet 20%. Um, I think this gives it the best chance to meet 20% of any other alternative that I can think of, though.
So if we didn't have the CAT, right, because we couldn't meet our fare box ratio, and all we had was the dial-a-ride, could we then go to offering it to everyone in the community and then having to meet the 20%? Does it always have to be just for the seniors and?
No, no. It, uh, the only reason we would want CAT to be strictly for senior, seniors and disabled persons right now is so that it can meet that 10% ratio. You could always, uh, yeah, if CAT, uh, didn't make the ratio and you decided to eliminate CAT, you could open dial-a-ride to the general public, uh, and try to meet the 20% ratio. But then, of course, you would still incur the penalty if you did not meet the 20% ratio.
Any other comments?
Okay, looking for direction on this item.
I'm almost thinking that we need to table this and put it to a study session. Have Councilmember, uh, Lane here. And I'm just, just now, it hit, hit me. So I apologize in regards to, we haven't hit it. So...
But how long do we have before?
How long do we have? I mean, say, for example, if we wanted to wait a couple weeks to be able to sit down, and, and I know this, our staff is busy, and I get that. And I get this thing is important, and, and I get it, right? I'm for this. I think that 37 years of your experience, that this is the direction we have to go, but all we're doing is put a bandit on something, because we're, we're probably not gonna reach it. But...
Well, then the question isn't which route it is. The question is, is are we willing to absorb the money?
Well, no, we're not willing to absorb the money, but how much time do we have? You had to ask that question. And until we have to act on this.
But you...
No, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, in regards to, we can act on it right now, we have these routes, and, and again, if we move something over, or we took something out, we'd have other people here. I'm, I'm just sitting here trying to bang my head against it.
But I don't, I don't think that if we waited and made a decision, there's, it's, what, what is the point gonna be? What more information is he gonna be able to give us that he hasn't given us already?
But see, I, I, I have to agree with Councilmember DeRocic, because, you know, when, when the mayor brought up, you know, 48 stops, and we're going, we're going at, you know, both directions, and we, and, and Mr. Kavanaugh said that we don't really stop at every one of them, then I'm, I'm thinking in the back of my head, well, why don't we just have a one-way route? And we don't stop at every one of those 47 right now, or, uh, you know, that what he, what he counted. If we went a one, one-way route all the way around the city and incorporated parts of Route B, and everything was within an hour, you know, uh, where would we be? Because I, I know in front of the old Memorial Hospital, I always see people standing there to get on...
And they have a new clinic now.
And, and to get on the route, now we're, we're reali- realistically, we're eliminating that, that complete, you know, Herndon, Herndon Avenue. You know, I, I, I can, I can see some of the elimination to the west and see some of the elimination to the east, but, you know, if we had a one-way route, and it went north on Mitchell, so it did stop in front of the Walmart, and then went down Hatch Road to the west, so we can, could, could be there by the Kmart and go around that area, and then come back down Herndon, I, I think, you know, I, I don't know, maybe, maybe there is a, a one-way route. So...
It's just we have to reach the fare box, the 20%.
Correct.
That's, that's the bottom line. So either we say, okay, we're, sorry for jumping in. We either say, we accept this, and this is what we're gonna go with, knowing there's a high probability, I'm just guessing.
But you have to remember, sorry to interrupt, but the key here is, we need to make substantial changes to the system to qualify for a two-year exemption. Right? If, if we just tweak this and, and just modify it, that's not substantial enough to the system to qualify for this two-year exemption that we're looking for of being below that fare box ratio. So that's a key component to this, is we need to make a substantial change in order to buy ourselves two more years. So if we don't make that change, if we just tweak around the edges, then we're not gonna qualify for the exemption, and we're gonna be subject to that penalty.
And, and the question was, excuse me, when do we have to have those changes made? Today, or do we have 30 days?
Yesterday. We have to get these in place so we can demonstrate that we're making that effort.
I understand, but do we have to have it done today, or in 30 days?
Fred, I mean...
It's, it's a gray area. Theoretically, it should've been done July 1st. So every day that we do it beyond July 1st, um, could be questioned by someone who wanted to interpret the law in a way that is different from the way we want to interpret it. Because right now, it's just subject to interpretation. Uh, so, we need to make these changes as soon as we can, unless we wanna take the chance that somebody could come along and say, you weren't eligible for that two-year exemption for the first six months of fiscal year 16 and 17. That's what you need to be concerned about. So I recommend that we implement these as quickly as we can, so we can say that we at least had these services in operation for a majority of the year.
And I do understand that we will make substantial savings, because we went from two, two buses to one. But with, with the, you know, the comment made about the, the 47, 48 stops, and you don't always stop at one, I would, I would like to see a loop down Herndon, Herndon, and make it one big loop.
I've got a question for you. Could we, if we adopted this, this route, six months from now, if we find that it isn't meeting the criteria, could we tweak, make little changes, or what's the process for that? Do we have to take that back and adopt another change, or?
We, we can tweak, and if you, um, yeah, certainly, you can, you can, you can tweak it anytime you want to. There's no question about that. City Council could, could always tweak the route. We wouldn't get any kind of an extension on our two-year exemption. Um, the, the other thing you could, you could do is authorize the city manager to make tweaks as he saw necessary, uh, to improve ridership. Uh, it would be entirely up to you as to how you wanna do it. I believe, Mr. City Attorney, I want to step on, uh, your territory here.
No, I, I would concur. My question is, what about our claim? How would this affect our, our claim, if at all?
The, uh, the changes that we are making now, um...
Well, if we did something to, uh, if we did something now and did something different, would that somehow affect our?
Well, our, our claim, no, I, I don't think we have anything to worry about there.
So, so my recommendation would be, we, we adopt the route as presented, and then if there are certain modifications or slight modifications, after six months, or start the process now, and if you find in a quarter or five months that you think, we think that it'll increase the ridership, we can make a slight change. But I, I don't think we should hold up, I, I mean, we're predicating that whatever we choose is going to, to hit 20%. And I think I agree with Councilmember DeRocic. Um, we never have hit it, and I'm not sure we're gonna start now. So the bigger question is, is, um, you know, if we want the service, we have to utilize general fund.
And Mayor, if I could make one quick point, is that, right, the, the motion before you, or the resolution before you, uh, is for implementation on December 1st. There's a lot of groundwork that has to happen between now and then, and that's why it's December 1st.
So if it's December 1st, could we have an update after the first quarter?
The first quarter after, after the December 1st start date?
Implementation?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Well, since no one else will do it, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2016-116 and 2016-117.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Council and agency member DeRocic?
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Vice Chair Klein?
Yes.
Council and agency member Rhino?
No.
Mayor and Chairman Bierra?
Yes.
Motion passes 311.
Okay. And so then you will bring back to us after the first quarter, those results. Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move to new business legislative update. Mr. Wells?
I'm messing that up for you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, uh, just a quick overview on legislative actions, really at the state level. Um, so I'll, I'll buzz through this real quickly. Um, as we've been kinda discussing over the, the course of the past several months, state legislature, their, um, normal business adjourned on August 31st. Um, the bills that were approved by the state legislature, both Assembly and the Senate, were passed on to the governor for his signature. He has until September 30th. There are 780 bills, and that's kinda hard to believe for most of us, how many of those are on his desk for approval. He's already taken action on several of those bills, uh, both a climate action bill, as well as one on, um, SB 32, which is the reduction of greenhouse gases. The transportation special session, we've mentioned that before. That's one where they're looking at how to change the ultimate collection of gas tax and that type of thing. That is still an active session. Um, there's a question as to whether that will continue going into the future or not. And the legislature, once the governor finishes his action on September 30th, there's a slight little gap there of their recess, and they'll reconvene on December 5th, um, and get their legislative session for the next year started in January. So for us, primarily, we rely on the League California Cities to provide us an overview of those bills that are important to us. They conducted a webinar on September 7th. Uh, there's about 20 bills that they went over. I sent the council a copy of that, um, packet, uh, on Friday, so you're aware of some of those highlighted bills. Um, again, there's, continues to be bills related to, um, district elections, which this council has already taken care of, uh, as well as related to the redevelopment agency and the cleanup actions related to the dissolution process. So just wanted to cover, cover a couple of the bills, uh, that are out there. Um, SB 441, that, uh, was, I actually missed the name on there, that's, um, Senator Wolk. Uh, that item is one item that we brought to this council earlier, and we did some, a letter of support. So that is a league-recommended support item. Uh, Assemblyman Gray, AB 1244, uh, basically putting some provisions in there to tackle Medicare fraud, I'm sorry, Medi-Cal fraud, not Medicare. And a couple of the opposition bills that the League's recommending, SB 1069 regarding, uh, second units, and then public contract claims, uh, AB 626. Um, again, these aren't real big, heavy bills per se, but these are just kind of a sampling of the bills that are going up to the state legislature. And again, we're relying on the, the League and their representation and their lobbyists to help us, uh, determine which bills are, are interested, uh, that may impact us. Generally speaking, we've gotten a couple requests for letters of support or opposition on these. Nothing that's significantly pressing at this point. Staff's not recommending any additional letters sent, um, for either, uh, support or opposition on the current bills pending, uh, with the governor, unless council has a different idea and would like us to send any letters of support. At this point, we're not recommending any on, any legislation that's currently pending at the state level. So with that, we'll move into the next piece of legislative update, was the November ballot measures. So for most of us, uh, we haven't seen those ballots yet, but it's gonna be a very, very thick packet from the state this year. 17 ballot measures on the ballot. Uh, the League has actually taken a formal position on four of those. Um, the first two, Proposition 53. So this is, uh, an interesting proposition, uh, requiring voter approval, uh, if the state's gonna issue, uh, bond measures more than $2 billion. The backstory here is, um, some folks who really don't like the governor's plan for the, um, peripheral canal, today's version of that, the twin pipes. Um, basically, it's an effort to block that. So the League has taken a position of opposition to that, and they do have a resolution if the council's interested, that you could pass, um, to formally oppose that proposition. The League is supporting Proposition 54, and, and this is a, called a Sunshine Act, uh, proposition, and basically requiring, uh, the current process that the legislature use of a gut and mend process, where they put a bill up that says one thing, and then in the, kinda the last minute, they remove all the language and put in new language at the last minute, and it never gets published. This proposition would change that process and make them, um, so that at least 72 hours of printing before you could, um, take action on, on a proposal. Again, that's, take, the League is supporting, uh, that item. The other two that they've taken formal positions on, Proposition 65, um, this is all related to plastic bags. So for those of you who recall, we've brought this up once or twice in the past couple of years. The state passed, um, legislature two years ago to ban, um, plastic bags on a statewide basis. That is being challenged by that second item, um, 67. It's so, kind of a companion to try and really confuse the voters at the end of the day. So there's a referendum to overturn that ban, the same time Proposition 65 is an effort to take the money, because right now in the grocery stores, if the city has taken that action, can't do the plastic bags, but you can sell a paper bag for 10 cents, and that's money is going to a different sources. That Proposition 65 would divert that money to the Wildlife Fund. So the League has taken opposition on that one, and then they're supporting 67, which would uphold the ban on plastic bags as it currently exists in the legislature. Confused? It's gonna be very confusing for the voters as well. Um, so again, we are not recommending, um, at this point, any formal support for any of those four items, uh, unless the council was willing to direct us to send either letters of support or opposition, or take formal action about, of a, a resolution. So I don't see any heads nodding there, but we can discuss some more if you'd like. Tom?
I was just gonna add, at, uh, probably around November, our, the lobbyists and lead staff in our office will prepare that, uh, yearly review to survey the damage, I guess, is maybe the best way to put it.
Yeah, of, of what, what he ends up signing, uh, once, once those are all logged, when they become effective. Um, Churchill White does a really good, um, flyer, handout, rather, relatively thick, because like I said, 780 bills, and he'll take action, you know, half of them, I think he, last year, he was about 80%. Uh, he only vetoed about 20%, somewhere in that range. So we'll see a bunch of new laws, varying levels of impact. So last one, um, not purely a legislative item, but wanted to bring this to the council's attention. We've talked about this before. Um, and then there was a, an email that came out today from Assemblyman Gray, um, as well as some information that's kinda circulating, that the draft substitu- that the draft substitute environmental document, uh, referred to, the SED, as the unimpaired flows. This has been talked about for the last few years, um, as part of its Bay Delta. Again, the, the tunnels that the governor's really, um, trying to get done. As part of that process, um, they're looking at their environmental document, increasing the flows down the Tuolumne River, as well as the Stanislas, and the impact that'll have on this area. So, pretty significant to the, the region. They're looking at a number somewhere between 35 and 40%. Would have very, very significant impacts to the county. And what the, the county is doing, they're doing their own independent economic study, um, and they're looking for our support, basically trying to get everybody in the region on the same page of, of opposition to this effort, and making sure that the state, um, really studies this properly. Because as of right now, uh, their current, their past efforts were very, very limited. So there's a draft letter, um, that would be released, uh, hopefully this week, that was, uh, would put our seal on that letter, and it's signed off basically from all nine cities, as well as county, and the irrigation districts, of basically putting the state on notice that, uh, you know, we are going to hold them to a very high standard here. Again, the state does what they want to do, but we want to make sure that we're on a united front here, so. Uh, the draft of that letter, again, I sent to the council on Friday, and we would hope to get that to, to the county with our, uh, signature, with the mayor's signature, as well as his seal. Um, I mean, with the city seal on it, um, showing our support for the region and the impacts that this may have. So available for any questions you may have related to the SED.
Any questions?
Nope.
No? Okay.
All right.
We will move on to discussion items. Fireworks discussion, Mr. Wells?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We'll move right into this one. This is a, a quick item, just a couple slides here on this item. As the council, oh, that turn off. It's weird that that switched. Anyways, apologize. So July 16th, July 4th, 2016, uh, the council, and I think anybody in the city, recognized that there was a, uh, our economy apparently is doing well, uh, or better, um, because, uh, folks spent a lot of money, uh, on illegal fireworks. You didn't have to pay for a show, because you got a free one, uh, anywhere you looked. And it wasn't unique to Series. This was in Turlock and Modesto, and every city manager that I spoke with regarding this saw a, a significant amount of aerial fireworks this year, and, you know, I kept hearing phrases from folks, "It's a war zone. That's all I heard all night long, and it went all weekend." And so it's something that, um, you know, we sat down, I talked to several city managers, uh, kind of what they, what their thoughts were, and talked a, quite a bit with the city of Modesto and their approach. And so, one of the challenges related to enforcement of illegal fireworks is where the enforcement lives today. And that's in the Health and Safety Code right now, basically a state law. And the, you know, the ability to enforce it is a rather high standard. It basically requires an officer who's citing the person to actually see them light it. Um, and then you've got the DA to prosecute it. So it's a pretty high standard and very difficult to enforce. And so what a number of cities have done, and Modesto has just started this process, unfortunately, they didn't get it done in time for this past year, but they're having it for next year, um, is writing it into the municipal code, so that it's a municipal code fine, not something that you're going after a state code. Gives us a lot more latitude. And that would allow the city to set the fine amount, rather than relying on what, you know, the state levels are, and then again, the, the DA to prosecute. So that's one of the conversations, um, that I put in a memo earlier this year. So tonight is really looking for council direction on which way you'd like us to proceed. Uh, we've plenty of time at this point to try and get something put together, if the council's so inclined to tackle this, this challenge, um, you know, by July 4th of next year. So, as I mentioned, the, the challenge related to the enforcement, obviously with the amount of activities that we saw, getting enough people on the street, uh, would be difficult, but, um, a couple things that we've considered, and here's, here's in essence what our recommendation would be for us to pursue, looking for council direction, uh, would be to pursue a, a level, uh, local ordinance to increase the fines. That number varies somewhere between $500 and $1,000, to make it substantial. You know, you want people to recognize that, you know, we're not messing around. Um, you know, that's a local ordinance, would take a, you know, a normal process for adopting an ordinance. Uh, we'd also like to reach out to our nonprofits who run our Safe and Same. Um, you know, they sell fireworks and make, you know, good fun, good fundraiser on that program. What we would like to do, or we think would make a lot of sense, is if we crack down on the illegal fireworks, that should, in theory, should drive more traffic to our Safe and Same locations. So one of the things we'd like to analyze is if there's potential for the user fee for those folks. Right now, it's about $250. Um, for that to be increased, um, to some level, so that we could fund additional enforcement activities. We think the relationship there, um, would help us to provide staffing levels for both police and fire, um, for the overtime that would be incurred, and then couple that with some fines. We may be able to get closer to breaking even and not see a significant impact to our budget. So that's what we would like to look at, is a combination of those two factors. And then as I mentioned there, the, the increased enforcement activities. Come up with a plan of attack, of how we would staff for that longer weekend, uh, to make sure we've got enough bodies available to try to do some enforcement. So with that, I'll look for any council discussion, thoughts, comments, whatever you'd like, and how you'd like us to proceed.
Any comments or objections?
Nonprofits. And I know that all the fireworks are nonprofits. How many nonprofit fireworks booths are in the city?
I think we did 17 last year, Senator Brandt. And it's usually right around that number, 17, 18, is what we said.
And they're all Series nonprofit?
Correct.
Now, could you come back and, um, at another date when we decide what we want to do, as far as what your projected cost would be to increase enforcement activities?
Yeah, that's what we would come back with, is that information. As we would bring back an ordinance, um, would be the, the big step. The ordinance, we'll take a little bit of time to get that created. Bring the ordinance back with the related information, because I don't think it makes sense to give you the ordinance without, you know, the plan of attack of how we're gonna do it.
And currently, where do those nonprofit fees go to?
General fund.
They just go right into general fund? They don't go to public safety to?
Just some general fund. I mean, public safety is all general fund anyways, so.
Well.
It offsets that cost, yeah. It was part of a user fee that was adopted in 2011, was the last time that fee was, was looked at.
Okay.
In 2010 study.
So is the direction to have, give them the direction?
Absolutely.
Is anyone interested in banning them altogether, like the city of Pacifica did? You know, I might be the cranky old woman up here, but...
We would never say that, because human resources might get upset.
Well, she's not here, so I can say it.
I'll text you right now.
But after, but after seeing last year, you know, each year it's gotten so ridiculously bad that I seriously thought after last year, why don't we just ban them? I, I don't understand why we, we don't.
Banning fireworks, or banning illegal fireworks?
Banning all fireworks, because then it makes it easier if somebody is, has in their possession, or they're shooting them off. They're gonna, it's gonna be real obvious who's doing that.
The challenge with that approach is we have no offsetting revenue to go after that, right? If you just, if we just ban it, we don't have any way of kind of bumping up our enforcement activities to go enforce that ban. Right? That's the key balance here, is by, by allowing the Safe and Same and a, and a revenue source that that creates, we're able to create some, some revenue, and coupled with an enforcement arm that's local, then we'd have some money to be able to, to do that.
Councilmember Rhino, with being a part for 12 years of a nonprofit that had a fireworks booth, I mean, that was the only substantial fundraiser that they had to help them maintain their level of service for the year. I, it would be very, you'd really have to convince me to, to find a way to ban it, because, because it is.
In 10 years, when you're my age, you'll feel that way.
Oh, no, I, I, I mean, the Chief Nichols would tell you, I text him that night twice, saying, "Do we have anybody that is working tonight?" I mean, I think those are my exact words.
Well, but, but you know, the city of San Jose deputized more public officials, so we could deputize you, and while you're out running around, you could, you could be issuing citations and bringing in all kinds of money for the city.
You know, the issue with it, and Councilmember Rhino, I'm, I'm not that far off base with you. You know, I, I, I have a home in a community that does not allow fireworks. Um, and, and for the most part, I'm usually not home. I'm, I'm up in Tuolumne County during that period of time where they also banned them. When I drive home, it's horrendous to see the litter that's throughout the streets. A disregard for people picking up, and I don't live in a bad neighborhood, but it's just, it's terrible. Um, you know, on the, on the off chances when I have been here, it sounds like World War III. I'm afraid, when I see the things go up in the air, that what are we gonna do when the person comes to the podium and says their house burnt down because somebody's fireworks went off and, and got the roof on fire, and they lost the home, or somebody lost a hand or something like that. So, I, I'm not as far off from you, and I know that there's 17 organizations out there that, you know, want the almighty dollar, and I'm sorry, that's gonna offend some people. But, you know, if there was a restraint that was, I mean, I would be okay with it if there was a restraint. It's the same type of issue on New Year's Eve. I mean, I'm fearful, just like on the 4th of July, people are gonna go outside with a gun, shoot it in the air, because it's the, it's a noisemaker and everything else. And the first time one of those bullets comes down and hits somebody, we might be taking different action up here. But we've been fortunate, because that hasn't happened yet. But it could. And, and so, and again, I'm not that far off base for what, what, what you commented on.
Okay, well, I'll give you a couple more years, too, to get old, and then you'll change your mind.
Councilmember Drossit, I didn't say I wasn't there now. I just said I'm not that far away.
Didn't you just turn 50? Yes.
You know, I've, I've been doing fireworks booths since 1995 in Series, and off and on as the football coach, because we have a nonprofit. But it's, uh, with the drought a couple years ago, I know that there's some, some talk in regards to they're gonna ban fireworks. And, and hey, I'm all for banning it, because I hate working the fireworks booth in, in the summertime. But it's, you have to get the county involved. You have to have the nine cities also be dialed in to doing it, because it's just the same thing that people live in San Joaquin County, wherever it was banned at some point. They'd go buy the fireworks someplace else, and then they'd take them there. And who's losing out on the, the money, because the money's going to help service to go fight after these guys? But I do have to tell you that I was at River Oaks Golf Course, because that's where we celebrated the 4th of July, and the driving range extends just like this, and it was just the most ama, I'd never seen Series like that. I thought I was at John Thurman Field back in the day, that the fire, the illegal fireworks were just going all over the place. And I think that's obviously one of the biggest issues that we have in regards to, you know. I'd like to see teeth, and I think a thousand dollar fine for somebody lighting off a bottle rocket or one of those mortar things that go boom and scare you, right? It's, uh, but, but at the same time, too, I, I think we'd have to have the county involved.
Yeah, I agree. And talking to the city managers, um, at a couple different meetings, there was, no one was quite ready to go to the full ban, uh, at least in that conversation. Most people's thought is that full ban will take enforcement activity as well. That if you got to that point, you know, it would be, this approach would be helpful in that enforcement activity as well, so that if you had this in place with a stronger ordinance, um, already, it would allow you, if for some reason this was not successful, um, to be able to go to that next step, would be the full ban. So I would see this as a, kind of the, the logical first step. And if that doesn't solve the issue, then you move it to that next step, which would be the, you know, the more, more effective ban. But again, it still takes enforcement activities for that ban to be in place, because it takes a lot of work.
So we all in agreement to have him?
Yes.
Head down the path that he's identified here?
Reluctantly.
Okay, at this time, I'll open it up.
Uh, Dave Pratt, you know, because our Legion posts, uh, that we rely on, on the firework booth, that, that's, uh, our major income to let us do what we do all year. And you're not gonna eliminate all these illegal stuff. Uh, most of that's hit and run. They'll, they put that stuff out there, light it off and take off. You're gonna have a heck of a time catching those. I, I realize this year's been the worst. I've seen this as the worst. And, and, uh, basically, uh, we're not the only, only nonprofit group that, that relies on, on that. It, as far as the fires from illegal fireworks, is because the idiots, they don't put out a bucket of water and douse them out, and let them, put them in their garbage can while they're still hot, up against their houses. So, uh, our deal, our deal, um, it depends on when the fourth comes up. When it's close to the weekend, there's three-day weekend. We see, we watch the boats, the motor homes, stopping at the gas station on their way out of town, out of town, or stopping at the liquor store loading up, up. Just keep on, that's why usually around the three-day weekend, we don't make a lot of money, but in the middle of the week, because more people staying home. Uh, that's my thought on it.
From my, Leonard Shepard, from my experience, Tuolumne County, Calaveras County. I was there with CDF for 21 years. The one thing that the state lacks, the city lack, if you want to go for a city ordinance to make the illegal fireworks, so you can catch them, and you do catch them, don't give them a thousand dollar fine. They'll laugh at you. They can make a lot more money selling their illegal fireworks to other people with illegal fireworks, for illegal fireworks. Give them a $10,000 fine. First time, $10,000. Second time, confiscation of your property. That might slow them down a little bit. When you have people coming into our city with a truckload of illegal fireworks, and then selling them to people, it's a multimillion-dollar business in the state of California. We gotta do something to curb that. And you know that some of these Safe and Same fireworks can be modified to do things they're not supposed to do, to explode and, uh, everything, so it's, in my own personal opinion, Linda, I agree, ban the damn things, all of them. But, that's, I can see that's not gonna happen, because there's a lot of nonprofits to depend upon. But it, it just seems to me like if we make the fine for being caught a lot more than $1,000, really get tough. But you can bet that there's, there's not a state legislator that's willing to get that tough in the state of California. But anyway, maybe Series can start getting tough.
Sheila Brandt, um, and Linda, I'm older than you, so I know the fireworks, they go crazy. I also was with a nonprofit, our church used to do fireworks, um, and it was our major thing for our youth department. But then we stopped, because we felt that, number one, we couldn't have enough people to help do the fireworks booth. But then we also talked about, we just didn't want fires to happen or anything like that, so we just stopped doing it. And we just found other ways to have fundraisers, and it is doable, even though it's, we are not getting the money that we had with the fireworks booth. But I like Toby's idea about fining people that, you know, that are using the illegals, and the only way we're gonna do that is to be able to charge those nonprofits more money so that we have money to work with, to hire the extra people that we need. So, um, I was all for banning the fireworks, but I do know that that is a big fundraiser. So maybe if we did keep that, so that we have that revenue coming in to help get, um, enforcers, maybe that's the best way to go.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. So we still want to move forward with the direction that they've identified?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, that will move to the item number 22, water system update.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, we wanted to talk about the, uh, a few of the water projects that are ahead of us. It's a kind of an overview, and I'll keep it brief. Uh, the first one is the, um...
Uh, the first one is the, um, surface water project. Okay, so, the Stan Slough Regional Water Authority is moving rather quickly with the surface water project. The site's been selected, we hired a program manager, West Yost and Associates, in April. Their goal is, is at the end of the, the program management with them is to have a document that is, can be delivered to contractors for the design and build of the treatment facility and the downstream improvements, the pipelines. Um, we just completed a ninety-day quick start plan, which, um, was daunting. Um, we, we, we went through a demand and supply analysis, regulatory permitting, environmental review, funding strategies, water quality, pipeline alignments, public outreach, and a whole host of other issues. Uh, these meetings were held on Thursdays typically here in this building. Some of the goals, the end of, uh, the end of this year, our goal with the program management level is to come up with the projected cost of what the treatment plant's going to cost and the downstream improvements. Um, with that, in spring of twenty seventeen, we'd like to begin the campaign of the, the PR campaign for the rate study. In spring of twenty seventeen, we'd also like to, uh, be under construction for the wet well. So what that means is there's a infiltration gallery that's already in the river, was installed twenty, about twenty years ago. And the goal is that with the infiltration gallery, we'll be able to, or the wet well, we'll be able to construct a, a concrete box per se, that pulls the water out of the river for sampling purposes. And this is really important for us as we move forward for the treatment plant design. That way, it gives us a really good picture of what exactly the water quality is coming through the river. We're going to start next month sampling the river itself monthly for water quality, we need to do that for two years to meet Department of Public Health requirements. Um, but the infiltration gallery and the wet well's really important to the, to design the treatment plant, but most economically and feasibly. Um, the, the water sales agreement with Turlock Irrigation District, there's two key components to it from us. One is the offset water, and one is makeup water. Offset water is water that, the city of Turlock currently has a tertiary treatment process, where they take wastewater and they treat it to tertiary standards, and then they're currently delivering that water to Turlock Irrigation District to a pipeline, um, at the Harding Drain, which is out at Padrety Park. The agreement is written in such a way that, uh, the city of Turlock would need to come up with two million gallons a day, and the city of Series, one million gallons a day. Currently, we're sending right at eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred thousand gallons of wastewater to Turlock, so we would need to increase our levels a little bit. And here in the next month or two, I hope to bring back a project to you to approve for design, to increase pumping, do some sand filter work, get a pump station, do a few things out with the wastewater plant. Makeup waters, um, makeup water's interesting, because it, it, it's the true parody for the ag world. And what it is, is that, for example, this year, the agricultural world for TID took a twenty-five percent decrease in their allotment. Typical TID is forty-eight inches per year, per acre. This year, they gave thirty-six inches. So what that means to us is currently on, projected, our take is five million gallons of water per day, treated water. We need to be able to give back twenty-five percent, the makeup water, for TID. So what that is in terms to us is we need to be able to produce eighteen hundred gallons a minute of water out of the ground, pump it directly to a canal, closest canal we possibly can get to, for the entire irrigation season. So for example, as last year, uh, the allotments to the farmers was sixteen inches, which was a seventy-five percent decrease. So if we were to do that, we would have to come up with about thirty-five hundred, four thousand gallons a minute, to be able to get our full allotment of five million gallons of treated surface water. Sense? This is the, uh, a snapshot of what the proposed alignment is. So the wastewater treatment plant itself, the construction of it is the, there's a piece of property, it's a forty-acre amen orchard that is directly adjacent to the parking lot at Fox Grove, it's up on a bluff up there. The treatment plant itself would be located there, there would be two pipelines coming out of the treatment plant, one for Turlock, one for Series. These are the proposed alignments. Ours is pretty easy, it's straight down Hatch Road and into River Bluff. The two million gallon tank for us is located at River Bluff, we have the piece carved out in the back there by the new parking lot. Supplies, so water usage demands, our goal is, is to, for, for treated surface waters to get five million gallons a day. So over a period of a month is a hundred and fifty gallon, a hundred and fifty million gallons a month. The, the light blue line is the demands in the water system. So you can see this is where we need to make up the difference there from the wells that are in the water system, to be able to make up the difference for demand purposes. Um, so to go into water system reliability is, is, this year, I just wanted to kind of show that, you know, from two thousand and seven to two thousand and fifteen, we've had a pretty, pretty stringent water conservation program. You know, we've cut sixty to seventy percent, sixty percent, we've, you know, we have a, a very, we started too early in, in the state's eyes, and it caught us a little bit. The water system reliability is, is that in two thousand and nine, the darker blue is the max day demand, and the lighter blue is what our capacity is. In two thousand and thirteen, you can see where there's quite a big, big difference there, simply because of, you know, water conservation, water restrictions, as well as the, the capacity in the system was up, because we had a couple additional wells, we added the two at Smyrna Park, that were quite large bumpers. In two thousand and fifteen, we backed down because we lost a couple of wells due to water quality, arsenic and uranium. Water levels, so you can see that in, in two thousand and nine, the static water was at seventy-two, two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fifteen's about sixty-two feet. What should be noted here is, is that in two thousand and seven, the water sta- the static water level in the system was sixty-two feet as well. The interesting piece here is, is that the, you can see where the pumping water levels are increasing. So what that means is, is that there's less water down in the wa- the aquifers, and we're having to pull water from deeper levels, i.e. we lose, you know, wells due to arsenic and/or uranium. So this kind of shows that, is, is that the darker blue line, or the lighter, I'm sorry, the, the bar graph on the left is nitrate, and the line graph shows the actual production for those years. So as you see, in two thousand and eight, we were at, um, three point four billion gallons of water pumped, our nitrate was at twenty-nine, our uranium was at nine. Coming along to two thousand and fifteen, our nitrates at twenty-nine, which is a good thing. Had we continued without water conservation, that elevated, that increased in the water production, we would have lost more wells due to nitrate. Um, but what's interesting here is because we're pulling water from different areas, you know, the uranium is up. Sustainable groundwater, um, what a great topic. In two thousand and fourteen, the governor passed a series of assembly bills to put the Sustainable Groundwater Act into, into legislature, basically. So what it means is, is that the, to manage groundwater to maintain a safe yield of each basin. Two thousand and fifteen, the state's water code was amended for that, um, the assembly bills. Is jointly regulated by DWR and the State Water Resources. I was telling Toby that I was in a meeting with them two weeks ago, and the, it's an unfunded mandate, we're looking at about a million dollars across all the agencies to develop what we're calling a ground and water sustainable plan. And the, the topic of the conversation was the fine structure from DWR on agencies that don't comply, rather than how to help you comply. It was an interesting, it was an interesting meeting. Um, the groundwater sustainable agencies have to be formed by two thousand and seventeen, so what that means is, is that we have a basin. This is what the Turlock Groundwater Basin looks like. So it's, you can see it's bordered by, uh, the Merced and Stan Slough Counties, you can see the rivers, you know, Turlock Irrigation District, Merced Irrigation District, and everything in between. So approximately twenty-six agencies in there. What we're looking at is, is there's seventeen agencies, you can have multiple groundwater sustainability agencies within each basin. Right now, we're looking at two. If you have any agency who decides to not be part of the program and wants to be part of their own, that poses a big problem. For examples, DWR has classified five hundred and fifteen basins throughout the state of California, a hundred and twenty-five of those basins have already submitted GSAs, sixty-two of those basins are already in what they're calling probation, because there's overlap. So overlap means, is just to say, for example, we decided we didn't want to be a part of the GSA. We have that option, we can elect to do our own, we submit our own plan, the other sixteen agencies, this list here, becomes one GSA, and they submit that document to DWR. DWR then, what they're going to do probably is put this entire basin into probation. What that means is they get to step in and dictate how the water's extracted out of the basin, until we all can sit down at the table and agree. With that said, is, is, I think you guys can, can understand what a task it is to try to get seventeen agencies to agree upon what an agency looks like. What we're trying to do now is to develop funding strategies, mechanisms, voting authority, voting powers, the amendments, who does what, to have a JPA in front of you, hopefully by November, December, for adoption, so that we can have it placed, because it has to be to the DWR by February for a three-month cycle, to be approved by July first. It's a pretty quick timeline. This is a snapshot of what they're calling the critically overdrafted basins. So basically, the entire San Joaquin Valley is a critically overdrafted basin. I think we all kind of knew that. Our goal then, once the agencies are approved and adopted, we then have to come up with a groundwater sustainability plan. So the way that it's working now is there's going to be two agencies within the Turlock Groundwater Basin. Eastside's got a one, and Turlock Irrigation District have another one. Those two agencies then have to develop a plan, then they also have to develop a joint plan to go to DWR, because DWR and the State Water Board only wants to deal with one plan for the entire basin. So this is a very big effort amongst everybody. Water conservation. The governor put into order, um, in two thousand and fifteen, a seri- an executive order in two thousand and fifteen for water restrictions and water reduction across the state. There was a twenty-five percent reduction across the state, our state, our goal was twenty-six percent. We hit that target at twenty-five point two percent based on, based on June through February of two thousand and fifteen, compared to the same timeframe in, in two thousand and thirteen. Our overall reduction average for the entire year for two thousand and fifteen was sixteen percent. Part of the two thousand and fifteen urban water management plan, we had to do what they called a stress test. Part of that stress test looked at an actual, an audit of the water system, meters, unaccounted for water, everything that goes into the water system. Our goal, our, our new number out of that became thirteen percent for the entire year. So that's, that's where we are today. So the bar graph, or the line graph actually shows kind of where we are, the purple line being where we are today, the two thousand and sixteen number, the red line's the actual thirteen percent goal, so obviously we're meeting it, we're pretty close, but it's there. This year, I kind of wanted to show you statistically over each year where, you know, where the reductions have come. Obviously, we started in two thousand, you know, seven, eight, and nine, we had some pretty heavy reduction years in those years, and it kind of tailored off. Unfortunately, the governor chose two thousand and thirteen to actually use this as comparison year, so we did start a little early. Um, we were pretty fortunate that the residents actually, um, reduced. I mean, I, I was, it's, it's impressive how much water we've actually reduced over the last ten years. The goal for the two thousand and fifteen urban water management plan was, is that during two thousand and fifteen, we had a two hundred and two gallon per capita per day, and in two thousand and twenty was a hundred and eighty gallons per capita per day. Um, and actually, right in two thousand and fifteen, we're at a hundred and twenty-two. So we're well within all of our targets and our means as of, as of today. This here's just some overall statistics of the water system. You know, since we started the program in two thousand and eleven, the violations, you know, warnings, in two thousand and fifteen, we started all the, the targets to try to maintain reduction. You know, since, since we've started the rebate program, you know, in two thousand and eleven, we've given four hundred and eighty rebates for a total of thirty-six thousand dollars back. So this is a snapshot of what the, uh, the target looks like. You know, this is, we picked on Mr. Klein in the past, so I picked on him again. Um, current targets are twenty-seven thousand gallons during the summertime, unless you ask for a request for an audit. Um, currently, ninety-eight percent of our account holders are meeting all of their targets. With that said, is that the governor's extended the executive order for water conservation reductions through two thousand and seventeen. Um, with the reduction of, of, of one day a week, we went from three days a week last year down to Tuesdays a week of watering, we actually reduced our water, we're looking at about eighteen to twenty-two percent. Um, with the water quality concerns, you can see with the aranims and the nitrates that we have, it would be our recommendation to leave the current conservation practices and targets in place. That would be council direction at that point, and I'll take any questions.
Any questions of Jeremy?
Would, would it be something if we could let the residents water three days a week, and then we kind of skew what our percentage is, and then that way, when the state comes back and says, oh, you need to reduce, that it's going to be, that it's something that we can actually do, versus if we're at the very lowest we can do now?
My opinion is, is that because the two thousand and fifteen numbers were at about fifteen to sixteen percent on average per month across the board, our goal now is thirteen percent. If we were to give back that third day a week, we're looking at about a twenty percent increase in production during the summer months.
Mm-huh.
There's no way we could meet that two thousand and thirteen tar- that, that thirteen percent target.
But won't they give us a new target in two thousand and seventeen, based on what we're doing?
So what's going to happen is, is that the governor's extended out the executive order through two thousand and seventeen for water conservation. In June, May or June of next year is when they're going to start looking at all the two thousand and fifteen urban water management plans that were supplied to them. And part of that is going to come in audit. Once they do the audit, and they sit down, and they, you have to attest and verify every number that's in the audit, it's about, it's about six pages worth of information. Once we do that, then we're going to get a new number established from that. That number's probably not going to come to us until two thousand and eighteen. This is a very long, drawn-out process for these guys.
Okay.
My recommendation that, you know, we would go as staff's recommendation to leave the current conservation practices and targets in place.
Yes, I agree.
Any objection with that? I mean, I know.
I don't, no, I don't, I don't have an objection.
Okay. With that, um, does anybody in the audience want to comment on this item? So we use that extra water to put out those fireworks.
Or to let someone's husband water his garden.
All right, with that, we will move to council member referrals. Is there anyone on the council that'd like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Okay, uh, reports, um, I have nothing to report. Vice Mayor Klein?
I have nothing.
Counselor Marino?
Nothing, Mayor.
Counselor Member Drossit?
Nothing.
Okay, Tom, anything?
Nothing, Mayor.
Mr. Wells?
I actually have some good news for a change. So for those that stuck around, the, the best news that I've had to announce in a long time, on the five-year anniversary to the day of the city council's approval of the Mitchell Ranch Project, we received a decision late this afternoon, and the city was victorious in that appellate court decision. Uh, we won on basically all accounts. So that is really good news. What does it mean next? Uh, we don't know at this point. Our, our legal counsel's still reviewing the decision. Um, the, the other side would still have the ability, if they so desired, to appeal that decision to the California Supreme Court. Fortunately, there's a shorter window, uh, on that timeframe. Tentatively, it looks like they have about thirty days to file that appeal, and then the California Supreme Court has another thirty days to make that decision. Those timeframes don't hold me to, because those are estimates at this point. But likely, um, we would have this complete resolution done within the next sixty days, but it was very encouraging, the decision was a very solid decision, uh, in the city's favor. So we look forward to, uh, getting with the developers of the Mitchell Ranch Project, AKA Walmart folks, um, to, uh, start developing their plans and move this project forward. So, good day for us.
Mr. Westbrook?
Um, just a couple of things as it relates to the general plan update. Um, I'll be presenting next week, um, to the Planning Commission some draft general plan vision statements and guiding principles. Um, once the Planning Commission has made the recommendation, we'll bring it to the council. The other thing that's kind of in the works, we're probably six to seven weeks away, um, we'll be establishing a joint workshop. The consultant is now working on the, kind of the land use alternatives, so we'll be bringing those to the commission and the council in kind of a joint, uh, workshop, so that we can get some direction and refinement on those alternatives, before we finalize those up, and then start with our next set of community workshops on the preferred land use alternative. So some exciting things coming up relating to the general plan.
Great. Daryl? Brett? Brian? Tracy? Steve?
Mr. Mayor, I know it's getting late, Steve Hallam, Economic Development Manager. I know the city council is well aware, as staff is. of information specifically to small businesses. And just this week, we posted a couple of links to articles on subjects such as successful marketing tips for small businesses, countering cyber crimes targeted at small businesses. And then just today, there's a small business information forum, uh, tomorrow evening in Modesto for South Modesto Small Business Potential Candidates. And again, I just would encourage people to check it out, like the page and you'll get these referrals because small businesses are important in series. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy? All right, with that, we will move to closed session. We have two items, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation and then conference with labor negotiator. Thank you.
You mean, we're not done?
No, we got closed session.
You guys.